Through the dialing of the following phone number, 1408-418-9388. And the password can be found at sau53.org under the Remote School Board Meetings heading. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using WebEx or via telephone. Instructions have also been posted to the website, sau53.org. Again, the Remote School Board Meetings heading and click on the meeting with today's date. We're also providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anybody has access problems, please email Sandy Valine, that's S V A L I N E at sau53.org. And in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So we'll start with Amy.
Present and alone.
April.
Present and alone.
Jean.
Present and alone.
And I don't see Ann on the list. And I'm Andy and I am present and alone. So we're going to go a little bit out of the normal order again tonight because we have some pressing business and one of our attorneys has joined us tonight. So number two on the agenda is the Pembroke Support Staff. Amy, what's the A stand for? Association Contract Approval. So I'll give you a quick background and turn it over to Amy for a little bit more. The paraprofessionals in Pembroke School District formed a union some time ago and the board has been negotiating with them for the past some amount of time. And we believe that we have an agreement that is good for both sides. So Ms. Manzelli was on that communications team, so I'll let her give some of the details before we discuss a bit and have a vote on whether or not we're going to ratify that.
Okay, I will do that. So the part of the benefit of unitizing, of course, is the ability to negotiate a contract. So we are proposing a three-year contract, which would work towards harmonizing the big discrepancies that exist within the paraprofessional pool of our employees and also expand the step system from three steps, which is it is currently to five steps. Obviously, that comes at an increased cost, and that was one of our primary points of negotiation. The opening number that the union came to us with would have been $581,000 as the total cost for the three-year contract. Through about five volleys back and forth, we are presenting an agreed-upon amount of a total three-year increase of $2,9505. That's broken up, of course, over the three years. The first year is the biggest at just shy of $100,000. The figure is $99,675. The second year is $73,094. And the third year is $66,736. Beyond the dollars, there were a lot of important terms for both sides, and we started with the teacher contract, which of course has been in place and improved over the years. And then from that, we tailored it to the specific needs of the district and the paraprofessionals and the schools. So let's see here. The contract offers differentials when there is a one-on-one assignment between a paraprofessional and a student in the bridge program. Then a paraprofessional obtains the Registered Behavior Technician certification. If a paraprofessional works more than 40 hours a week, they are entitled to overtime pay. They now get equalized pay. They can opt for 26 paychecks of equal amounts over the course of the... They get $35 extra if they serve as a substitute teacher for more than three hours in a day. There are some caps on accrual of sick leave, both at the annual mark and the mark. Three days paid bereavement leave. There are some considerations about when renewal notices need to go out and also how discipline would be handled and how reduction in force would be handled. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much. So just to give another little background of how this stuff kind of works, there are legal reasons, obviously, why negotiations don't take place in public. So those sessions have been ongoing, so I just want the public to be aware that this is not the first or only discussion that we're having about this, obviously. And there may be some candor or lack thereof in this particular discussion, but we did want to, you know, at least give you that information so that you know kind of what we're talking about. So with that, if there's any discussion from members of the board before we go ahead and take a vote, we can do that.
Andy, this is Amy again. I just wanted to say again that it's been an honor to work on the team for this first ever paraprofessional contract. I think it's a really exciting advancement for the district.
Okay, so if there's, if there are no questions for Kathy or no further discussion, I think we, I would entertain a motion to, do we need to motion to approve or ratify or does it not matter, Patty? Or Kathy? Does the language matter? Ratify versus approve?
I would use ratify.
All right, then I'll accept the motion to ratify.
Andy, this is Jean. I make the motion to ratify the Pembroke Support Staff Association contract as outlined by Ms. Manzelli moments ago.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Amy. I'll second.
Okay, then I will open up one last time for questions or discussion. Okay, then on a roll call vote to ratify the contract with the Pembroke Support Staff Association. Amy.
Yes.
April.
No.
Jean. And Andy's yes. So contract is ratified, and if there's nothing else on that, we will move on to agenda item number three. Thanks Kathy for joining us. Feel free to stick around for the next four hours if you'd like. All right, so.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Now back to our regularly scheduled program. Agenda item number three is agenda review. Patty, do you have anything?
Just want to make note that we found some revisions that we wanted to make to the December 14th meeting minutes, so those were not put in the drive. So if we could just wait on those until the next meeting, but January 5th is in there.
Anybody, any board members have anything that they don't see on the agenda that they think needs to be on there this evening? We've got plenty to do tonight. Okay, then with that, we will move to agenda item number four, minutes of the previous meetings, as we just heard, there's some December ones that need to be cleaned up a little bit, so we will look at January 5th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January 5?
Motion to approve. This is Jean.
Second. Amy.
Discussion around the January 5th minutes. No corrections? All right, then we'll go ahead with the question. To approve the minutes from January 5, on a roll call vote, Jean. April.
Abstained because I was absent.
Amy.
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you. So we'll move on to number five, public comments. So our first public comment section, we will try to keep it as close to 15 minutes as we can. If this is your first time joining us, if you have something that you would like to contribute to public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. In the latest versions of WebEx, I can see the hands now, so I can go ahead and call on people, and Mr. Morris will unmute you. When we finish with hands, the, I'll turn it over to the phone lines. If you're on the phone, you'll need to hit star six when that time comes and just state your name and I'll recognize you then. So we've got a few lining up. I think that Karen Rusing was first.
Okay, how about that?
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you all for all your hard work. I don't know how you guys do this every week or two. For some of the people that are on the call and in the community that don't realize how important that para contract was, that's huge for our district because that's going to be bringing more students in that parents are going to want to have one aide for their, for their special needs child, rather than having them rotate every year and not knowing if I have Ms. B or if I have, you know, Michelle or if I have Ms. So-and-so. I know as a parent of a special needs child in the district, I never, I had to always reach out to the case manager, who will she have today? I'm not 100% sure who should I be, yeah, I be communicating with. And if I had had that specific para for a three-year contract, it would have been, it would have been really, really easy for us to mainstream her into that program. So I don't want the community to be discouraged with the prices and all that money part that you heard in there, because I do think that's going to be bringing people to the district. And that's it.
Were you calling on me? I lost you for a minute.
Yep, you're, you're good to go.
All right, sorry about that. All right, good evening. My name is Tori Barber, and I'm the president of the Education Association of Pembroke. Our mission above all else is to provide the best and safest education possible for the students in Pembroke. We would love more than anything to see all of our students face-to-face every day, but we must ensure that it is done safely. After surveying our membership about their preference of learning model at this time, 57% of the 90 respondents supported being in a full remote model, while 43% are in support of returning to the hybrid model. Those who supported remaining remote believed that it's the safest and most effective model at this time during the pandemic. Many cited the current community spread numbers and the concern about the safety of being together in a school building as cause to support the remote model. Many have found that the ability to directly interact with all of our students on a more consistent basis over the course of a week has been an added benefit of being remote for the past few months. This consistency of schedule and instruction has had a positive impact for many of our students and staff. Many respondents were concerned about having to pivot to remote on a moment's notice due to staffing shortages or positive cases within that school and in a, in a return to hybrid model. That being said, many of our respondents cited concerns about students not being engaged during remote learning and the necessity and importance of seeing students in person to better facilitate their learning and social emotional well-being. Those who support returning to hybrid believe that the model affords us the ability to enact safety protocols with which they are comfortable enough to see students in person. Having students directly in front of us will hopefully improve and engage our disengaged students and afford students a more structured learning environment when they're in the building. Through our membership is split on whether to stay remote or hybrid or return to hybrid, an overwhelming 92% of respondents felt that a full return to school model is not feasible under our current conditions and until the vaccine becomes available to the school community. Many concerns were raised, including the lack of space in buildings, the cost of new safety measures to account for more people in the building, and the inability to socially distance, which is still recommended by the CDC, the inability to safely provide mask breaks and the overall health and safety of students and staff. If the district wishes to safely and fully reopen our school sooner, I would encourage the school community to call the governor's office and request that K through 12 teachers be added to the Phase One of Vaccine Distribution Plan. New Hampshire is one of two states in the country where K through 12 teachers are not in Phase One. The EAP would like to thank the board for their hard work and dedication at this time.
Thanks, Tori. You got that at 2 minutes and 47 seconds. You're getting good at that. So I, people, I think everybody's aware, we don't generally have back and forth during this, but I'm inclined to ask you a question just because you presented a lot of information there, if you don't mind. You stated 57% said full remote and 43% said hybrid. There's not really any wiggle room in there. I was just curious if that survey offered full return as a choice or if it was just, would you rather do full remote or hybrid?
It was a choice. So it was a choice of, the question was, would you be, let me pull it up so I don't misquote myself. But I did give all three choices.
Okay, that's really all I need. I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misinterpreting the information that you gave us.
No, it is all three choices, and I can repeat the numbers if you want, because I know I have to go quickly in order to get my three minutes in.
Yeah, that's, if you think you can do it real quick, that's fine.
So it's 57% of the 90 respondents supported being fully remote. 43% were in support of hybrid.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And 92 were against full return in the current pandemic state.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry again, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't mishearing or misunderstanding that. So thank you for clearing that up. And both Tori and Karen, if, please put your hand down unless you have something additional. If you have something additional, I'll come back to you, but. So next, I believe, was Mr. Gleaton.
Thanks, Andy. I appreciate it. Good evening, folks. I have a question or a concern that I don't think will be necessarily addressed this after, or this evening. However, the COVID-19 self-screening portal through Convening MD, their privacy policy clearly states that data is either sold or provided for marketing resources, marketing purposes, rather, excuse me. I was hoping we could get clarification on is that school data or is that personal data? Is it PNII? And one additional steps the administration is taking to secure our data, considering it's mandatory that we fill out the form. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. And the last hand I see is Tim Girardi.
Hey, everyone. So comments around the plan that was distributed a couple of weeks ago. Apologies, I haven't replied to folks yet with some of my feedback, but one, I'm wondering when this will be removed from draft form into, into final state. Looking for additional clarification on, you know, some of the decision criteria, you know, still not really clear on, you know, how this will get enacted, when, what's the decision? I mean, it does show that the matrix will be used for guidance, but what are really the criteria? How are we going to institute parental choice in the decision for either full and time, remote, et cetera? How do we, how do we bifurcate that between the parents? Also, really, you know, going back to the, the survey that the, the union conducted, I would be interested to see if there was a call out specifically on parent choice. I wasn't really clear on that from the comments earlier. So really, you know, just same comments, you know, different meeting, looking for a path to parent choice, looking for proactive planning to get us there, timing, decision criteria, when we'll be able to see that, and, you know, really how we're going to enact a, really a positive model for, for our students, because there are so many students that need that in-person interaction. There are so many other school districts that are going full in classroom. I can't believe that Pembroke is unique enough to where we cannot fit that bill. So really just calling everyone out once again, how do we get there? What's the approach? What's the financial impact? Seeing the costs in here, you know, we do need to take that into consideration, you know, what's, what's the model look like from a financial perspective beyond cost to the bottom line, you know, so we know what's really going to be happening? So really, that's, that's what I would leave you all with, and hopefully we get some serious consideration over the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Tim. We got a couple more hands while Tim was taking his turn, so I think next is Lauren Dwyer.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Lauren Dwyer, Fourth Range Road. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I did want to echo some of what Karen was speaking about earlier. And I would encourage people not to look at the price amount. I think that it's fantastic that our paras are going to have this opportunity to, that they're unionizing and that. I do have some questions, which I don't expect to have them answered tonight or at any time, but I would also like to just put this piece out there when our paraprofessionals are getting their RBT training, which is also to be a Registered Behavioral Technician. I would urge that, I know right now, I believe we're contracted for ABA Services with Bill White, so I would just want to, I would want to just urge our leadership, our administration to make sure that after you get the RBT training or when our paras receive their RBT training, that they're working directly under the supervision of a BCBA with behavioral plans in place, because the training is wonderful, but you sort of need that extra guidance there. And that's, that's all I wanted to speak about tonight. Thank you guys so much for everything that you are all doing, the time that you're taking, you know, the safety procedures that you're, that you've enlisted to keep us all safe. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lauren, and I've got a hand from Ann. Hey, Ann, first, are you present and alone?
I am present and alone. I apologize, my camera will not work this evening. I apologize for being late. I did have a town meeting, but my question is, when we were in public comment and is it, and I came in late, but is there a discussion and a vote between board members to allow a back and forth discussion with residents?
I would have to look at the policy. I know that there are circumstances where it can be allowed. And yeah, I really just wanted clarification because I thought the information provided was incomplete, but I will look at that, and if that's inappropriate, I will make sure to do it appropriately in the future.
Oh, no, I was just coming in late, so I just didn't know if it was voted on, but thank you.
Yep. So I think that's the last hand that I see. We will go to the phone lines. There's a handful of folks on the phone. If you are called into the meeting and you have something you'd like to contribute to public comment, you can go ahead and hit star six, and I think that will unmute you, and you can just state your name, and whichever name I hear first, I will recognize. So I'll give it a few seconds and see if anybody unmutes. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to agenda item number six, consent agenda. It looks like we've got something.
We actually have one gift slash donation that Dr. Morris will present for us tonight.
Fantastic.
Hello there. We have Aranko Oil Company in Concord. They are affiliated with ExxonMobil, and they do a science gift to local area high schools. We were fortunate enough to receive this. We've received it from them in the past. That gift is $500, and they just specify that that goes towards the support of STEM education, given their field of, of science with ExxonMobil.
We get a motion to accept, and then we'll look for discussion.
This is April. I'll make a motion that we accept the donation.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, any discussion or questions for Mr. Morris?
This is Amy. I just wanted to say I'm all in favor of taking money from a company affiliated with ExxonMobil, but I would have preferred if we could have a motion or at least have everybody on the board articulate that it's not any sort of endorsement of the business, either Aranko or Exxon, but grateful for their money.
Any other discussion? Okay, then there's a motion to accept the donation, amount of $500 on a roll call vote. April.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you very much. Is that it for consent agenda, Patty? Okay. Then the meat of the meeting, agenda item number seven, immediate business. This part will probably be a little bit boring for the public, but maybe not. There is a upcoming New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly. There are some resolutions that the, that the School Board Association plans to vote on, and we need to have a discussion on some of those and give our district's opinion or our school board's opinion on those matters. Patty, do you have them in front of you and can, can give us the, just the resolution part of each one, and we'll take them one at a time? If not, I can pull them out of the drive.
Yeah, I have them in front of me, so you don't want me to read them, correct?
When I was reading through them, it was, I don't think was all the, you know, there's the first part of like, year two, four, and blah, 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 but the actual resolution, if they're not super long, you could give us that.
Okay, the first one is, unfortunately, it is a little bit long. It's a COVID-19 funding resolution, and the summary or the rationale is that it addresses funding for expenses related to COVID-19, including staffing, supplies, equipment, and upgrades to technology, indoor air quality, et cetera, et cetera. And I think basically just asking for the board to support that resolution to be put forward.
Okay, so I think, I think the way that we should get through these the quickest is like we do with most things, if there's a motion to, a motion one way or the other, then we can get a second, and then we can do some discussion, then we'll move to the next one after we vote.
This is Amy. I'll make a motion to not approve or join in this resolution because, as stated in the document, it is covered better and sufficiently in other resolutions.
Okay, Sarah, a second.
I'll second that. This is Jean.
Okay, any other discussion?
This is April. Last year, the board had a discussion, just a general discussion, and made their wishes known, but we did not vote on each individual resolution. I'm not sure if the board feels that they need to vote on each resolution or just give general guidance on how the board feels about each of these resolutions.
That's up to you guys. I don't have straightforward ways. Just have a discussion on each one, that's fine. I guess, I guess, Amy, it's really, or I'm sorry, Amy, April, if you have a feeling one way or the other, since you're our representative, if you'd be more comfortable with a general consensus, that's fine, if you'd like, you know, or we could vote on just the ones that where the consensus doesn't seem to be agreed upon, however, is going to be most helpful for you to present it to them.
So I'm actually comfortable if we just speak about it and if we get a consensus, even if we informally do a straw poll, I'm happy to vote without a formal motion on how the majority of the board feels.
Okay, so I guess first of all, Amy, you have a motion on the first one. Do you want to rescind that?
I think it's actually just, I don't think it's either more work or that much more work, and I think it's much clearer to have votes on each of these. I think we can move through them pretty quickly.
Yes, sir.
I will say to Amy, I will say typically, I don't have a problem either way doing it. Typically, in the past, we have, as April stated, done a discussion and given guidance and then gone from there, but again, I don't have an opinion either way.
Okay, I mean, I guess, I think I'm okay with that. I think it's kind of, I don't understand why we wouldn't vote just for clarity, but I'm okay either way.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking through some emails here too, and I do try to figure out when this came through, but I do have communication from New Hampshire School Board Association where they recommend that we vote on them. So unless somebody has a strong opinion against it, that's where I, that's where I'd like to go, especially since we already have a motion for one. So if there's not, if there's not any strong reason to not vote, it looks like that's kind of what School Board Association is asking us to do. it looks like that's kind of what School Board Association is asking us to do this time around. And I don't have good cause to do anything different.
Andy, this is, I think we, we already designated our, a person to represent Pembroke. So I believe that we don't need to vote on all of these because we do have people go represent us at other districts, that other delegations and other meetings that we don't get to vote on. And that person just, you know, gets.
Okay.
I think this is April again. I think as the representative to the New Hampshire School Board, for me, it would be much clearer to, for us to review what the recommendations are. And if how this board feels is contrary to the New Hampshire School Board Association's recommendation, that maybe in bulk, we can just vote on those that we agree to follow their recommendation. And if there's any that we do not to vote on those separately, I think that just for me, that makes it cleaner so that I know, you know, to pay attention to these specific ones that we are not in agreement with the New Hampshire School Board.
Okay, so Amy, I will turn back to you then. It sounds like you are opposed to the first one on the grounds that there are other resolutions that cover it better. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, and just to kind of comment a little bit towards where April was going. I am in line, like lockstep with the association's recommendations. So in other words, I don't support the ones that they do not support. I support the ones that they support. And I think there were two where they don't say they support or not because they were submitted late. There could be three. And I, I need help coming to a determination on those. So if we wanted to like make three votes, if, if we all happen to feel the same, you know, that might be an easy way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's some value in talking about a couple of these just so the public is aware, but I, I, the same. The ones that they recommended to support, I'm in agreement with. So if, I guess if the, if the other board members feel the same way, I'm okay with, you know, taking a batch and saying, naming off the numbers of the ones that the School Board Association supports and, and, you know, voting or showing our support of those. And the same for the ones they don't support. And then we could have a discussion around the ones that were kind of blank. Is that acceptable to everyone?
This is Ann. Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to buzz through these quick and kind of summarize if I can, the ones that the School Board Association is in support of. So sorry, it'll take me a little bit to get through the document, but. So number eight submitted by the Conval School Board is seeking viable financial solutions and funding models to assist municipalities in completing the true last mile broadband internet networks throughout their towns or establish a regulatory framework that requires providers to complete the network so that broadband internet access is available along every public way in the state and the school board supports that. Is there any discussion around that one quickly? Okay, the next one, number nine submitted by the Raymond School Board is a resolution to support reinstituting full school building aid funding to state funded levels greater than the state appropriations prior to the 2011 school board, I'm sorry, school building aid moratorium. So basically, you know, inflation costs of building things have gone up and the school building aid funds have gone down. And this is a resolution asking the state to restore those funds. The School Board Association supports that. Any questions, comments around that one? Okay, the next one is long, number 10, and it's submitted by the Minadnock School Board. The New Hampshire School Board Association supports school districts that promote equity-based inclusive education, which is a widely accepted concept that calls for accommodations in general education classrooms settings for students who have unique learning needs on the basis of sex, gender, identity, race, religious creed, color, marital status, physical or mental disability, national origin, economic status, familial status, sexual orientation, health condition, or native language. So the school board supports this with alternative language and the proposed language is this. The New Hampshire School Board Association supports equity and inclusion in all aspects of education. New Hampshire School Board Association supports adherence to all anti-discrimination laws, rules, and statutes, ensuring that no student is excluded or discriminated against on the basis of sex, gender, identity. I'm sorry, that's all one. Sex, gender, identity, race, religious creed, color, marital status, physical or mental disability, national origin, economic status, familial status, sexual orientation, health condition, or native language. I'm supportive of the alternative language. Or is there a discussion around this one? Or anybody that's not supportive of that?
Andy, this is April. One thing that I noticed that's left out of that alternative language is also ability, you know, based on someone's ability or on the, you know, people like to use a disability, but that's one thing I don't see that I would like to see in that language as well for that language to be included because discrimination does happen to people who do have disabilities.
I think I might have just read it too quickly. The proposed alternative language does say physical or mental disability in, in the list. Any other comments?
I'm still looking for phys, oh, physical or mental disability. I see that now. Thank you, Andy.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm in line with what you said. I recommend the amended version or I'm supportive of the recommended revised version.
Okay. Looking this next one. So, okay, I think that's all of them that they either flat out support or propose additional language for. So I think April, it sounds like based on the lack of questions or concerns that though, that it's okay to say that the ones that are supported here are supported by our board. Is that, does everybody agree? Jean, did you have a question?
Yeah, there's a couple more, 11 and 12.
Yeah. I was just doing the ones that they support right now. I'll go back to the top and look at the. Sorry, that was echoey. So, so now I will go through the ones that the School Board Association does not recommend or support. So that's the first one that, that we discussed. It was submitted by the Conval School Board and it involved funding to address COVID-related costs. The, the School Board Association agrees that additional state aid should be provided for school districts relative to COVID, but has repeatedly advocated for additional funding. But they believe the proposed resolution is too narrow and focused to be a longstanding resolution or statement of belief. Additionally, New Hampshire School Board Association has numerous resolutions calling for additional state funding and they, they give those resolution numbers. So Amy agreed with not supporting this one on the grounds that it's covered elsewhere. I do as well. Is there anybody that supports this resolution or has another opinion they'd like to share? Okay, then I'll move on to, let's see the next one. I think it's 11. Yes, 11 is not supported as well. The resolution is New Hampshire School Board Association supports the concept that the state of New Hampshire should define the calculation of inter-district charges when students are tuitioned to an alternate district. The New Hampshire School Board does not support and their rationale for not supporting says tuition calculations among school districts are a matter of local contract and can be determined locally. RSA 93, 193, colon, four states accept under contract the liability of any school district under this section for the tuition of any pupil shall be the current expenses of operation of the receiving district for its elementary, junior high school or public school of corresponding grade as estimated by the State Board of Education for the preceding school year. This current expense of operation shall include all costs except cost of transportation of pupils. Further, using a statewide formula to determine tuition costs may result in discrepancies based on local factors such as transportation and local curricular programming. So School Boards Association does not support. I agree with that. Is there anybody that would like to support this or has another opinion they'd like to share? I'm not sure if I said that was submitted by the Minadnock School Board. Okay, then moving on to number 12 submitted by the Oyster River School Board. The resolution states that New Hampshire School Board Association values and respects student and staff privacy. New Hampshire state law should enable school to require students who attend classes remotely to participate through video when enabling technology is provided. Schools should also provide tools that protect the privacy of location and other people in the environment where the student is remotely learning. The School Board Association does not support and their reason given the New Hampshire, as the New Hampshire School Board Association understands, the Oyster River School Board is asking the New Hampshire School Board Association to advocate for a state law that would require students to show their face in quotes or otherwise be visible when engaged in remote instruction while simultaneously making sure the program or platform students are using has the ability to use a background so that the student's house or household remains private. Given the variety of platforms school districts are currently using, this seems like a challenging task. Further, local school districts can choose their own remote instruction platforms that have these abilities and can require students to use them via administrative regulation or board policy. So that's not supported. I agree. And I definitely agree with their rationale on that one. Is there anybody that does support or would like to share their opinion on this one?
Andy, this is April. One thing that I feel like the comments from the New Hampshire School Board Association didn't really touch on is, is, and it makes me curious about what we're doing here within our own district, is the responsibility to keep the, the privacy of the location and the environment where the student is private and protected. Are there any such, I mean, does our superintendent possibly know, are there any such laws that, you know, bind us to making sure that, because now that information may be available to a third party that we're, you know, are we still responsible for making sure that, you know, the privacy of that information is secured?
The privacy of the information in the student's home?
For example, when you vote in your ID address, it's available, you need that to locate someone in the organization. I'm not sure what we're doing to safeguard our students, something we can to protect our students in today's world, especially on video platforms where hacking has occurred. Very important. So I'd like to know more about what is our district doing for that, even though this was only part of what was discussed in the New Hampshire School Board Association comments.
If the board wants me to, I'm happy to get something from Josh Barubi about how that works.
Yeah, if that's something that he can pull together and share with us next time around, that would be great. It's a good question.
Thank you very much.
Andy, it's Jean. The one thing, I played around a little bit with like the alternative backgrounds that are available on these platforms. I do have a device that supports them. I also have two devices that don't support them. So, you know, I'm in agreement with the School Board Association on this, on this topic, but one thing, you know, I have heard is that, you know, if you're not seeing a student's face, a teacher doesn't know if that student is engaged. And it is a concern. Somebody could turn on their computer and it says they're present, but they're off playing video games in the corner. But they, you know, again, it's something that we hopefully won't have to deal with for too much longer. But I just want to put my two cents in on that.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree. I mean, knowing what I know from the technology side, it, it's a sad and maybe scary thing to admit. But anybody that tells you that your privacy is 100% secure when you're connected to the internet is, in my humble opinion, full of bananas anyway. And that certainly does not mean we shouldn't take any reasonable precautions that we can. But at the end of the day, it is a third-party service and there is things being sent over networks and there's a limited amount that we can, you know, control about that. Think that's all the ones that they clearly did not support. Is everybody comfortable agreeing with those not support recommendations? Okay, I gotta find, I think that number 14 submitted by the Manchester School Board doesn't really have a final say. So there are three parts to this proposed resolution. One is that SAUs should be held harmless during the 2122 fiscal year for differentiated aid. Different, and number two is differentiated aid for fiscal year 2122 should be based upon free and reduced meal numbers from fiscal year 1920. And number three is the New Hampshire Board Association will make this a priority in its lobbying efforts during the upcoming New Hampshire legislative session. So I also want to read their recommendation quickly since it's not super clear. It says this resolution was submitted on Tuesday, November 10, 2020, after the deadline of Friday, November 6, 2020. In 2018, the School Board Association received one proposed resolution after the deadline for submission. At that point, the New Hampshire School Board Association Board of Directors decided to not make a recommendation, but rather put it to the delegates in attendance whether or not they wish to consider the late submission. New Hampshire School Board Association will afford the same process with respect to this resolution. So basically, the procedure wasn't followed, so they're not going to weigh in until the assembly. Does anybody have strong feelings on this one in one way or the other?
Sorry, Andy, this is Sammy. I'm struggling to get everything in front of me on my tiny laptop screen. Didn't, isn't this the one where at the very end, they did say that like, you know, we're not really saying anything, but essentially this is in line with like things we've been saying over time?
There is, my notes as background information relative to this proposal, New Hampshire School Board Association has numerous resolutions that speak to full funding for public education. Likewise, the School Board Association has previously advocated against cuts to differentiate aid and cuts to other matters of school funding. New Hampshire School Board Association believes this proposal is in line with the current existing resolutions. I'm not clear there if they're saying that, you know, our other resolutions cover it, so we don't really need it, or if they're just saying, yes, this, you know, it's more support for not cutting things.
That's exactly what I felt like I needed help with. And as I'm looking at this for a second time after having looked at it earlier today, I think it would have, I think they would have made it clear if they didn't want people to vote in favor of this. I think, I think they're going to be stronger. So I, I think I'm in favor of this one.
The one that really, the, the piece that stands out to me is number two, where they're talking about basing the aid on free to reduce meal numbers from fiscal year 1920. I don't see any other way you can do it because this, this year, everybody has qualified for free lunches. So that number can't be trusted. So I certainly support the second part of it.
Does it make sense to have Amber or Patty speak to this too?
If they, yeah, if Amber or Patty have anything they'd like to contribute to this, that's, that's certainly welcome.
It's definitely been a conversation around this, the entire state. The Department of Education has said that we are still requiring free and reduced lunch applications and they have been consistently asking us to reach out to families and make sure that they are filled out. But you can imagine the motivation for a family to fill out a free and reduced application when they're already getting free food. So the Department of Education keeps telling us not to worry that they have other mechanisms they are connected to and ways that they can get this information, but school districts around the entire state are very concerned about this affecting our aid. The good news is we're all in the same boat, but it certainly makes sense to me to look at last year's numbers.
We also are going to be sending something out to parents. We are, we're actually in the process of trying to see if we can find a application that we can, that people can enter online. We haven't located one of those yet, but there is a one call now that will be going out. We're just trying to find an application that we can work with that people don't have to print out. I'm not sure that there is one, but we are in search of one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So yeah, I, I think I, I support this, this one as well. Any other questions or comments around this resolution or group of resolutions, really?
I guess my, my question came at the end when it said this proposal is in line with current existing resolutions. So does that mean this would just be redundant? Or, you know, I, I mean, you took away that they're in favor of it. I took away that this is redundant.
I'm sorry, I just named myself. I, I, yeah, I, I agree with that assessment, Jean. I guess I would. I'm sorry, I just named myself. I, I, yeah, I, I agree with that assessment, Jean. I guess I would say I would err on the side of throwing more support behind not cutting any more funding. And if it's redundant, it doesn't hurt anything, but if, if we, if saying something would help and we don't, then it's probably working against us, in my opinion.
This is April, and I know Jean has attended as the delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association, as well as I have, and kind of aware of how they talk about their existing resolutions. Jean, I, I took away the same piece that they do not, you know, resolutions that they have already on the plate do not support cutting funding to schools. And so this piece of, this resolution is in lockstep with resolutions they already have on the books. That was my take on that. So you and I are walking away with the same take.
So I think we all, I think we all kind of agree here that however the School Board Association wants to handle it, whether saying, you know, it's already covered, that's fine, or or they want to approve it, but I think the general feeling is we agree with, let's not cut any more differential aid, and let's, you know, base our decisions for that aid on realistic numbers, which are probably the year-old numbers at this point. Is that, is that a fair sum up?
I'll agree.
That's my understanding as well.
Yep, me too.
Great.
Yes, right, also.
Thanks, Ann. So I think we have one more, number 13, submitted by Nottingham School Board. This is a shorter one. Nottingham School Board opposes changes in the IDEA allocation calculations resulting in funds being dispersed directly to the school districts in which the child is registered in towns which do not have high schools, and not to the student's residence. Further, the Nottingham School Board calls for the immediate return of prior method, a return of prior method of calculations for IDEA federal and state funds, as well as maintaining this commitment in the future to keep any and all funds distributed to the student's town of residence. The School Board's response. Again, this one, it's just basically says that it was submitted past the deadline, and it'll be given some time at the assembly. There is some background information here. The issue Nottingham speaks to arose in fall of 2019. The DOE received notice from the United States DOE that the New Hampshire DOE was incorrectly distributing federal special education funds. The New Hampshire DOE had been sending these monies to the districts where the student resides. Under the corrected disbursements per the US DOE regulations, the money is now sent to the district where the student attends. This creates significant confusion among districts that tuition their students to other districts. Numerous school districts have petitioned the New Hampshire DOE for clarification and a recalculation of these funds. The New Hampshire DOE has stated that the current method of disbursement is consistent with federal law, whereas the prior method of disbursement was not. That's a multiple. Patty, do you, do you have an opinion on this, or can you put it in layman's terms for us?
I was scrambling to find that one, Andy, because there's so I won't do a good job with that, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Are there other, are there questions around this, or clarification that anybody needs, or general feelings?
Andy, this is April. My, based on the knowledge that I have about special education, knowing that the district where the student resides is ultimately responsible for that student's special education, I would be in support of that money going to the sending district or the child's home district in lieu of where that child is attending school. Because ultimately, it's that sending district's financial responsibility to provide special education.
Thanks. Sorry.
That's kind of where, where it confused me, too. I thought that was, as April stated, already the situation. The money was here. If we placed the student, that money would follow that student wherever that student was placed.
Andy, Karen Gersh is here, if you want her to try to help you through this a little bit, too.
Sure, Karen, if you're familiar with this and you want to jump in, that'd be great.
So it, so it does, as long as the student's registered in your district, the funds go to your district. If that's, if that student's a resident there, resident there and attends a school somewhere else, the funds still come because the student is still registered as part of your district and is just placed in another district. We have that case, for example, with the Deerfield kids that go to Cogard. Cogard doesn't get the money for the Deerfield students. Deerfield gets the money for, for the Deerfield students. So that is kind of the case already. The only time it does become a little bit dicey is if, if there's a difference in where the student is residing because they are homeless or something like that for, or in foster care. So it, it changes a little bit, but for the most part, the district where the child resides still receives the, the funding from the state.
Thank you. I think for me, I'm, I'm not feeling confident enough that I fully understand all the details to go one way or the other on this, so I'd be, I'd be comfortable either abstaining or following the New Hampshire School Board Association recommendations, since they have lawyers that should be better at interpreting this stuff than I am. I guess the one thing that, that I that I'm confused about, or that makes me not feel confident going one way or the other, is I think I agree with what April and Jean have said, that the home district should be the one that's receiving the money, and as Ms. Gersh has said, that should be the case. I think what's being argued here is that that's how New Hampshire's been doing it, but that maybe that's at odds with how the Federal Department of Education says it should be done, and I don't know that I don't know if we have any standing to convince the federal DOE of anything, anyway. So, yeah. Anyone else jump in? But I guess my opinion is I don't feel comfortable taking a stand on either side of this.
I think I agree. This is Amy.
So we decide to have no position?
Well, I decided that. I don't know about the rest of you.
That's my decision also.
This is April, but basically what this comes down to is there's already an existing New Hampshire RSA that speaks to the responsibility of the student's resident district. If, if we ask that, you know, that responsibility be changed, are we actually asking that New Hampshire RSA be changed, so that's no longer what happens? Is this more about reimbursement?
That's what I'm not sure about. It's, it seems to me like it would be asking for the RSA to be changed, but I, I'm not sure. I, I think my bottom line is I'd be comfortable with, with whatever the School Board Association decides. But also, I'd be comfortable if the Pembroke School Board just didn't give an opinion. I guess you, you can feel out the room, April.
If I may, our district rep expert is Mrs. Gersh. Could we possibly pose the question to her of how she would like the board to act on this particular resolution?
Yeah, I mean, Karen, not to put you on the spot, but if you have a feeling, go ahead and share.
Yeah, you know, and, and I think it's, it's more than a special ed issue. I think it's kind of if we look at some of the charter school rules, and who gets the adequacy for students who attend charter schools, which may not be in your district, and how that money's distributed at this point, and I think that that might be a factor, and I'm wondering if that is, has a lot more to do with school choice, and having that money being a little bit more fluid than, you know, than is prescribed now. And so that's my, I guess, I guess my feeling is that it works, right now it works for us the way it is, because the, because of the, of the structure, but it's might not work so well if the case were that it were to follow the student with the charter schools, so that that money is, you know, in the pipeline. So it might not work for us in that case. Like, I mean, I think that we, we, the money goes to the charter school instead of the town where the charter school is, and I'm not sure if that's part of the convolution here, or whether it's looking at more, or more of the private schools. So I'm not really sure where they're going with this, this particular article.
Okay, thank you. So I, I think I hit all the, oh, sorry, Amy, did you have something? Or somebody just?
Yeah, this is Ann.
Go ahead, Ann.
I don't think that we're able to weigh in on this, because what they're asking is to change legislation, and that doesn't get changed very easily. So I, I don't think this is anything that could be, either way, if they worked on it, I don't think they would be able to do it for years. So I don't think it's in the Hampshire School Board's association's purview to even try to address this as on a legislation level.
Thank you.
This is April. New Hampshire School Board, being a delegate before, they make it known that they're working at the State House lobbying on behalf of the districts that are members of the New Hampshire School Board. So if that is a resolution that passes, that is something that they would lobby for. But with the advice of Ms. Gersh, that what is currently working, you know, we don't need a change right now. It's, it sounds like not supporting this resolution would be the way, if I'm understanding correctly, that her recommendation would be to not support this resolution.
I, I think I agree with you, April.
This is Ann. It'd just be interesting to find out what their history on this, you know, how much work they've done in the past on this. I, I think, is that something that you would find out, April, on the 23rd?
How much work that, who has done in the past? I just want to make sure I ask the right question.
If this is brand new for the New Hampshire School Board Association to lobby, or have they been trying to do this for years?
So if there's been similar resolutions proposed in the past?
Correct.
Okay, I can ask that question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think I hit them all. If anybody sees one that I missed, let me know, or April, if you're unclear on any, anything that we talked about, we can rehash if needed. Anybody have any other discussion on these resolutions before we move on?
Did we discuss number 12? I don't have a note for number 12. That was a not-support category.
Yeah, we took those as a batch, but let me just double-check and make sure it's one that I read and I didn't skip it.
Could just be I forgot to write down the note about it.
Yeah, that was about showing their faces and background technology.
Okay, sorry.
Excuse me.
Yes, okay, we did discuss that. Thank you. So that's not support. Thank you.
Okay, so every, April, you feel you've got everything you need to represent us, then? That's coming right up, right?
Yeah, it, it's this Saturday, the 23rd, and it sounds like we're in lockstep with the ones that, with the recommendations of the New Hampshire School Board. And we have formed our opinion about number 13 and 14, that just a question that I have is, how would you, these were passed after the deadline, that initial vote of if these will be considered, would you guys like to, me to vote yes or no on if you would like these to be considered? And if, if that should, if either of those should pass, I know how I shall vote, but even to consider motion 13 and 14.
Can I comment on this? I, I think if ever there was a period in, I'll just speak for myself, my life, where deadlines should be flexible, this is it. I would be in favor of these being voted on.
Yeah, I would agree, more or less, you know, if the School Board Association had some other reason why they thought it was unfair to vote on them that, that isn't listed here, I'd, I'd consider that, but barring that, I'm perfectly fine voting to consider these.
This is Ann. I'm with Amy, especially in the pandemic issues that we're having right now. I believe the deadlines should have been a little bit more flexible.
Okay, so just to clarify, New Hampshire School Board Association did not support Resolution 711 and 12. We, as a board, decided not to support Resolution 13. And then as the School Board Association supports Resolutions 8 and 9, and we have decided to support Resolution 14.
I think that checks out.
Yes, and number 10, we support the alternative language proposed by the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Thanks, April. Yeah, I meant, I missed that one, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I got everything here for us.
Excellent. With that, we will move on to 7B, which is the instructional model. So first we'll take a trip down Matrix Lane, if you're prepared, Patty.
Andy, excuse me, this is Ann. I just had one quick question for the delegates. Can anyone attend, but just Amy, April is the one voting?
I, yeah, I don't believe there's anything stopping anybody else from attending. April, are you aware of any reason why somebody else couldn't go and just not vote?
My understanding is the person who's registered as the delegate is the voting person for your district, but any, they encourage all school members to attend, so you're certainly welcome to attend. You do need to register so that you can get the webinar meeting number, because it is a virtual meeting. So I would just, if you're interested in going, I would check your email and go ahead and register so you can get access to the meeting, since it is this happening.
And if you can't find it, and Patty'd slap me if I'm speaking out of line, but for most things that we have to register for, if you just shoot an email to Kathy, she, she can register for you and get you all the information.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so decision-making matrix.
Okay, for the matrix, I updated that as of the numbers that were found on the New Hampshire COVID website as of today, and just to remind you, it's a 14-day rolling average. So for the first bullet, it talks about community level spread, and currently, Merrimack County is at 602.8 cases per 100,000, and Town of Pembroke active cases is 48, and I think that was up from 21 at the last glance. The positive COVID results within the Pembroke schools, currently, there are five students at Pembroke Academy, two students at Three River School, and one student at Hill School. Again, we're just returning from break back to hybrid, so this is information as accurate as the nurses have received it from families at this point. Staff absenteeism, so I kept us in the far right of the hybrid range, where it explains that it's difficult for the school to provide coverage and manage absenteeism, and that there is an impact to instruction. So right now, why I put us in that, in that category is because we are managing. However, Dan and I were communicating over the weekend, and if we had one more staff member call in or be quarantined, we were going to have an issue right on opening day. So just to remind people that even though we are back in hybrid, the staffing piece is the unknown, and it's, it's, you know, for a variety of reasons. It can be, you know, someone's ill without COVID, it can be someone was exposed to COVID and they're quarantined. It could be day-to-day medical appointments, so all sorts of different reasons that a staff member may be unable to attend, and we hope that those don't happen all on one day, but it's a day-by-day. Student absenteeism, again, we're still in the range where it's difficult to meet the needs of students both in and out of school. We're still in the green for the availability of cleaning and protective supplies. We're still okay with that. And we are still seeing compliance with our protections in terms of mask wearing, for the most part. I also, on page 2, updated the data for all of the other counties in our state, so you can see what was going on. Some of them were up significantly, others pretty similar to the last report that I gave you. So that is the matrix data, and I also provided for you the tracking sheet that our school nurses have been filling out. They updated those numbers today, and I populated that into your drive. But again, don't forget, this is our first day back in hybrid, so we're going to be going, everything is based upon what we're learning and families are telling us up until this point. So before we move on, are there any questions about the matrix?
Looks like no.
Okay, so obviously, there are many bullet points under this heading of school instructional model tonight, so I think the next bullet point- So I think the next bullet point talks about the learning model, uh, discussion, the current learning model that we're in, as you know, is the hybrid model. Um, administration had another meeting this morning to discuss the learning model, and I think the, um, certainly there's always. A question about what each day will bring, but it's nice to plan ahead and to know what type of model we plan to be in. So pushing out the next conversation for the learning model is very beneficial for our staff members. Who are trying to plan and not knowing if they're planning for remote instruction, whether they're planning for hybrid instruction. Um, whether there's a, a, a plan for them to be returning in full at any time soon. So I guess, um, before we hear from the principals, I just wanted to start the conversation off by letting you know that we are looking and recommending. Um, for an extended period of time to continue in the hybrid model so that it doesn't have to be discussed on, on a, um, bi-weekly basis. And our recommendation will be that we stay in hybrid through, uh, February vacation. So return on March 1st, um, and that that could be reviewed on February 16th. So, um, again, for consistency, the numbers are not getting any better. The vaccine is not being distributed to, um, staff, teachers, any school staff members yet. So we're looking for some consistency and then, um, the principals each have something to share with you. That's okay, based upon the current model that we're in and some conversations that we had this morning about any proposed changes we may be thinking about for hybrid.
Absolutely. Um, let's go with Wendy first.
Um, well, thank you. Um, so the conversation that we had stemmed from, um, you know. That creative out-of-the-box thinking, some of the things that we can do resoundingly, um, you know, remote's not ideal. Are, there was a, a very big, a strong feeling that. The consistency of seeing the kids every single day was one of the most important things for everybody, and they felt we were moving the curriculum along. That being said, hybrid, we definitely want the kids in, so we were looking at how can we get kids in the building. Um, thinking as far as, you know, Amy had mentioned, uh, the last meeting about, could we start with primary? So, you know, we sat down kind of looking at what could we do, and we have some ideas that we can kind of look at. Um, none of them are a hundred percent in stone yet. We would definitely need a little bit digging. But one example, and I've talked with my staff on this, um, as well, is, uh, bringing in our kindergarten every day on a half-day schedule. So we could have a group in half-day in the morning and half-day in the afternoon. We've worked out the logistics on it. There's two major pieces to it that we would need to take into consideration, which is the number one thing we have is parents. And whether this is something they would even be interested in doing, um. We cannot, our kindergarten classrooms are the smallest classrooms that we have. So even trying to get them in there, you know, spaced apart six feet or three feet, we can't fit a whole class in there, and that's one of the concerns that we have. So maintaining that hybrid of half in the morning and half in the afternoon, we could work on. We don't know where our parents stand on this. We didn't want to push it out to everybody quite yet without having, um, some more in-depth conversations with it. And the other piece, for example, would be transportation. Can they manage it? It would be redoing bus routes again. Um, because, so here's just an example of what it would look like if, for example, we had cohort A come in in the morning and then cohort B in the afternoon. It works well because cohort A gets their, um, live instruction and then the follow-up would, uh, they would work on at home. Cohort B would come in in the afternoon and then they would have the block the next morning to do their follow-up work. If we started flip-flopping which cohorts come in on which days, it now, we'd have to plan for double blocks of asynchronous work. In between all of the, um, live instruction. So it really would work, you know, one cohort in the morning, one cohort in the afternoon. That would completely change our transportation because right now you have cohort A coming in on Tuesday, Thursday, cohort B coming in on Wednesday, Friday. We would be looking at cohort A every single day. Um, so Wednesday, Friday, transportation would change. And then flipping who's coming in in the afternoon would change on the Tuesday, Thursday. So those are a lot of the considerations that we have. Our biggest one is, is this something that parents are able to manage? Because these are kinders. What are they, we gonna do with, um, childcare? We have quite a few kids who go to daycares or they are with grandparents in other towns on asynchronous days. So that piece of it, we would have to do a little bit more digging. So we've really looked into what could we do that's an alternative to this? Um, you know, if we start with kinder, that's one thing that we could do. Um, and then kind of looking forward as far as what we would be able to move with everybody else. But the main one is that childcare piece, and is this something? That we want to move forward with. So that was kind of the big thought that we came up with, um, as far as what we could do moving forward at Hill School in particular. Um, to kind of address, starting to bring in our, um, you know, our primary, uh, our primary students every single day.
Just quick procedure. Do you want us to ask questions now or wait till we've heard from all the principals?
We can, we can take it one school at a time if there's questions for Wendy.
Um, yeah, thanks for putting on the creative thinking hat. Um, I'm definitely intrigued by this concept. Though I understand it's like early days and there's still a lot to iron out. Do you envision that, let's assume that concept were to be able to happen? Do you envision? And, and, you know, I'm assuming you can get out your crystal ball here. Um, but let's just go with a general assumption that like the COVID numbers get better going into the summer like they did last year. So that kind of basic assumption. Do you envision ever being able to bring more kids into the school in something like that this year? Or would it pretty much be like? We get kindergarten in and in some different creative fashion and like that realistically might be the best we could do this year.
So overall, when we looked at that creative out-of-the-box thinking, this model was the one that we felt we could. We could act, we could handle across more grade levels. I'm not gonna lie, our biggest concern is parents. Is, is, is this feasible for parents and childcare? Um, the few conversations I've had, it has not, it has been a challenge, and I would say, you know, we would need to put a. A survey out or something like that to gather information. Could we do this in other grade levels? Absolutely. I think starting in kinder gives us a basis for understanding what the challenges are. Um, and whether this would be something we could do moving forward. Um. So that's kind of where we were at with it, that this gives us that jumpstart into it, um, to see what those challenges are. But I really, I need to be able to, to survey the parents and see if this is be something that they could manage. We could manage it. I've, we figured out the logistics, but that doesn't mean that the community would be able to.
Other questions about Hill School? Okay, um, we will move on to John and CRS.
Hi, everybody. Uh, we've been doing a lot of thinking at Three Rivers. First of all, I think the, uh, our remote experience, uh, we're able to, those of you that, uh, I don't know if you remember, we were able to do four days of, uh. In a row of contact with kids, and I think that was relatively successful, uh, considering the circumstances. We're, um, we're able to push through some curriculum, uh, at a much, uh, greater pace than we had been, uh, prior to that. I mean, aside all that, if we stay in the hybrid model, uh, we are looking at, uh, re-examining Mondays. Uh, and maybe, uh, assigning that a full remote for all students in the, uh, current, like the current model we have. So every Monday, I call it a skinny block, they would, all kids would go to all their teachers, like we currently are, well, what we just finished up. And then the rest of the week would be the every other day thing. That way, teachers would be able to initiate the week. They'd be able to, um, uh, get the, get things started, and it would give a third contact, uh, with the kid, uh, during, kids during the week. We still have some bugs we'd have to work out with that model, um, but that is something right now that we, we think, uh, might have some success. And still maintain, um, you know, the safety in the building. There are many different varieties of hybrid that we've looked at, um, and none of which, uh, we feel would be as, as, uh, for, for Three Rivers to be as appropriate as this one. I, I do want to, you know, want, want the board to know that while we're in hybrid, each school has its own separate needs and, uh, abilities. And so, uh, I, I think I'd speak, I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody, we'd like some flexibility. So if we stay in hybrid, that each school can tweak it, um, to make it fit our buildings, um, as much as possible. If we, uh, if we added the Monday, um, there might be some other things that we might pilot, uh, it's been, I don't know how long it goes, but I am very cautious. Of adding too many schedules to everybody. Um, uh, however, that would be, uh, one of our solutions going forward.
Thanks, John. Questions for John?
Uh, Andy, this is Ian. Could I ask Mr. Marson to explain Mondays again? You're stating that they would be instructional?
They would be, yes. We would, we would, um, and right, uh, during our remote, we had, um. Every child saw their teacher four days a week in about half-hour blocks. We would take that schedule and run it on Mondays only. So everybody remote, but it would be a, all students with all their teachers getting, uh, direct instruction.
Thank you. Uh, Andy, my question is, um, last meeting, we agreed to a, um. Uh, basically a, a settlement, and it was discussed about what was going Mondays were not going to for the rest of the school year. Be any kind of instructional outside of what they are? Would that be an issue?
Uh, my understanding, Anna, that was for one school only.
Oh, okay. All right.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was for one school only.
Thank you. I was just trying to pull up that document. I don't know if Patty could, could speak to it or not.
I don't have it in front of me, Anne, sorry.
Thank you, Andy. I'll look for it. Thank you, Mr. Marson.
Yep. Any other questions? I've got one, but I'll wait.
I obviously don't have it in front of me either, but I'm just thinking about the initial MOU that we had with the, uh. Education Association of Pembroke, and I think that it stated that any changes to the schedule would have to be addressed in negotiations. Uh, Amy, does that ring a bell?
I'm digging through my files right now, but wonder if Patty remembers.
That's how I.
Don't have it in front of me, um, but a solution would certainly be that John works with his staff and everyone is in agreement, um, to change the schedule. If it, I can't remember if it was PA only, and I don't have it in front of me.
Honestly, when I, when I looked, it did address Pembroke Academy, but I didn't feel like it addressed Three Rivers School. However, I could be wrong. I didn't negotiate it.
Yeah, I would just piggyback off of that, and I don't know if there's a question in here or not, but, um, I feel like. You know, everything is fluid right now, but I, I seem to remember before the holidays, um, you know, there was some discussion about the Mondays. And it seemed like, if my memory hasn't failed me too bad, that the general feeling from both the teachers and the administrators was that those, those Mondays were very useful for. For planning and whatnot. So I guess I'm wondering if. You know, with experience in hybrid now, they're feeling like they can, they can do a little bit better with those Mondays and, and they don't need that time as much. Or if this is kind of more of a, you know, we're trying to be flexible and get more contact with the kids. So, you know, we, we have to do something different and, and we're just trying to make a change. Is that something you can speak to?
Yeah, um. Quite frankly, I polled the staff and, uh, you know, I got all the results from staff, um. Hopefully, everybody, you know, if we stayed in hybrid, the first choice is to stay the exactly way it is, um, with Mondays. Second choice was to, uh, do a skinny block on Monday. Um, and so if we are looking to, um, increase contact time, that's why I said that's something we're looking into. Um, that would be the way we could do it. There's so many other options that, um, frankly, you know, you can do every other week. You can do every other day real schedule. I think that puts so much burden on everybody to include families with daycare and all that. Uh, that this seemed to be something that we could keep in place and get more contact for students. However, if, you know, if, if not, then in the language does say that our, that, uh, schedules need to be negotiated. Then that obviously makes it more difficult to, um, change anything that we do.
Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Marson?
Thank you, Andy. Uh, Jean answered it. Now I'm looking for the document. Thank you very much.
Um, then in the meantime, we will move on to Dan at the Academy.
Hello there. Um, you know, we have their, I'll echo what John and Wendy said regarding, uh, specific considerations for each school. I mean, you know, we don't have the transportation, um, issues with parents that Wendy would have to navigate. But we have a host of other issues that are, uh, you know, come with our. There are three significant ones that we always have to consider when we're looking at any kind of a change. Or frankly, even a refinement to what we're doing. Uh, the biggest one is our, uh, partnership with CRTC. Uh, CRTC, for those of you that don't know, the Car, Concord Regional Technical Center, uh, out of Concord High. Uh, serves, I think it's eight or nine different area high schools, but essentially in order for us to not. In order for PA students to take other classes before and after CRTC. Our schedule does need to align to a certain degree with the Concord High schedule. Uh, factoring in transportation over to CRTC. So that is a significant confound that really impairs our flexibility, uh, when trying to change our daily schedule. Uh, in addition to that, we have, uh, a unique schedule for every student, which is common for an American high school. And, um, you know, we have to do that because there are growing ways in which, uh, growing pathways for graduation, which is a good thing. Um, but that, that level of individual, um. I guess, individual needs for students also impairs our flexibility when we're thinking about doing wide, uh, reaching, um, changes. Lastly, we do want to. Getting, we're giving the same amount as best as possible to all students. Uh, what I mean by that is, you know, there is some sensitivity out there regarding a discrepancy between cohorts. Uh, and, you know, cohorts in the building, and if like, I know that there was a suggestion out there at one time. Uh, of everyone's frozen. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, but your, your video keeps freezing. Um, if it, if it keeps doing it, maybe you just killed the video and.
All right.
We can still hear you.
Great. Uh, so anyway, what I'm saying is that, um, you know, there is, people are concerned about a discrepancy between cohort A and cohort B in the building. Uh, some of that is due to holidays, some of that is we have to close because we don't have enough staffing for a day, that sort of a thing. None of it's really planned. Um, there was a suggestion at one point, uh, I think it was last meeting about breaking it, breaking off the student body into months. So that one student group is in, in the building for one month, another student group is in there the next month. One issue that I see with that right off the bat is, um, I think that there would be a preference among parents and students. To have one of the later months, and the reason for that is the vaccine availability, um, in theory would be better. Uh, and we would be more likely to be in the building, uh, and, you know, I think that that could generate a lot of, um. Of a discrepancy between all of the different student groups and their access to in-person education. If we were to break up the student body in that way. Um, another consideration, we're thinking about that is, you know, when we broke up the student body into cohort A and cohort B. We did that alphabetically and we did that in concert with other schools, uh, so that older students are home with their younger siblings. Uh, that, you know, blended families, we, we, we were able to work that out so that transportation could still happen. Uh, and if you're going to break things up, um, differently, then I think that that, that does generate some other issues that we would have to navigate. I mean, we certainly tried to be as creative as possible, but there are reasons why we have the, um, the product that we have right now. And a lot of that is navigating all of these different confines that, uh, we have to navigate every year or things that have been created because of, uh, COVID. Now, with all of that said, we have done some things that we've added some refinements, uh, that we're rolling out for semester two. Uh, one of those is, um, a uniform manner to take attendance. That, uh, in the past, it was kind of predicated on each, each, um, class. And we're making that more uniform, and hopefully that will be a little bit less frustrating for, uh, parents and students. for semester two. In addition to that, we updated our stakeholder expectations document and sent that out last week because there were things that we didn't anticipate that were on the original one or were omitted from the original one, like the health screening. Or, you know, the Google breakout rooms that we didn't have access to until a few months ago. So there are things that I think we've been able to leverage that we wanted to feature in that. And then I know Ms. Parkinson also worked with our other deans to send out essentially progress reports to all of our remote students, and that's a printout of their grades as well as a remote learning contract for those students to sign, understanding what those expectations are. So we're trying to find some areas that we can refine and do it that way. But, you know, as I was saying, there are a lot of different considerations that we have to try to suss out when we're making these changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dan?
I don't, I don't have anything for Dr. Morris, but going back to Mr. Marston concerning the MOA that we had discussed earlier, it does include, it does include Three Rivers School and Hill School in that MOA. And that was from a letter that Patty had shared to the drive. I just went through, looked at some names on there, and you do have teachers on that list that are affected by the MOA.
Jean, are you looking at the list of names attached or the language?
Just the list of names.
The list of names, though, my understanding is, is teachers that double dip. And what I'm reading on the, the MOU, MOU is it says, at Pembroke Academy, Mondays will remain designated as flex days. So it's, it calls Pembroke Academy out.
Yeah, that's how I read it too, John, but we can, we can, we can take that discussion offline if needed. It sounds like you're not, you know, gonna change this model or anything either way. So if that conversation gets to the point where we need to determine that, I think we can do it at that point.
And trust me, I'm satisfied to leave Mondays as a flex day or as a workday slash flex slash whatever we're going with it, which is a lot. So I'm satisfied to leave it as is.
Are there any questions for Mr. Morris? Okay. Is there any general board discussion? I guess we're for learning model. There's still a couple of bullets under instructional model. Is there anything that anybody wants to discuss right now before we move to the next bullet point? Okay, the next bullet point is end date to choose remote learning. This is something that we've heard about in the past, that it's a, you know, a difficulty for the schools when we have people sort of arbitrarily changing between models. Patty, do you want to expand on this a little bit and tell us exactly what you would like from us tonight?
Sure. So part of the MOA was the agreement that the board would put an end date to parents choosing to switch models to remote. So it's, as you said, it's been very difficult. Wendy's had some families on a waitlist in case something, you know, people wanted to switch spots in terms of remote and hybrid. John's class sizes are getting full with his remote. And then as we know, at Pembroke Academy, we don't have designated remote teachers. So we have consistently on a daily basis had parents requesting for their students to go remote, which is very difficult for teachers who have been doing the in-person learning and now need to figure out another student who will be in the remote section. So it does call out in the MOA that the board will choose a, a date or a deadline. And if you wanted a recommendation from administration, we were hoping to give parents a little bit of notice that that was going to happen and, and looked at maybe next Friday coinciding with PAs changing semesters that Friday, the 29th. After that, there would be no switching to remote from hybrid, assuming that we stay in hybrid.
That's, yeah, my question was going to be, when is the semester break? So questions or discussion around choosing an end date for model switching?
Andy, this is Anne. So are there any exceptions to that, Patty?
So yes, there, there can be appeal to my office and that Anne would be somewhere to, you know, exceptions that I would be taking into consideration would be a medical need. So if something happens to a student, a student is sick and needs to be remote for a period, then we would take that into consideration.
Thank you. And you were saying January 29?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
I thought we had given direction maybe a month or two ago concerning this. We had a discussion, I believe. So I probably am misremembering that, but at this point I would gladly accept the administration's recommendation for the 29th of January.
I'm comfortable with that too. My, my, I think there's somebody in public that I'm on mute. Yeah, my concern was I, when I was looking at the agenda a little earlier, I wasn't sure when the semester break was, and that seemed like a very logical point to me, but I was afraid we were maybe too close to it and that wasn't going to give people notice. But if we've got, you know, almost two full school weeks, that date makes sense to me. I guess we can, I'll accept a motion and then we can have more discussion.
To set the 29th as the last day to opt to remote as recommended.
This is Anne. I second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Patty, is that wording okay to, to the last day to change to remote? Or would you rather say the last day to change instructional model? Or change?
Um, no, I think we can keep it as remote because if students want to come back to school, we're doing everything we can to accommodate that.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion before I call a question?
Andy, this is Anne. I just have a quick question. So if we go to the model of full in, will parents still be able to have full, full remote?
I get, I, I'll try to answer that, but Patty, if you've got an opinion, feel free to hop in. I guess I would say if we, if we made that shift, we would probably have to make that determination at that point as to what, you know, what, what we were still going to be offering alongside a full in-person model.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Andy, this is April. I just have a question about if there's a waitlist for remote and, you know, if we're giving until January 29th to declare interest in remote, but you're placed on a waitlist. Does that mean as children come back to school and that waitlist opens up, that those people who are currently on the waitlist have the option to fill remote spots? What does it mean for those students?
I think it would be our intention to eliminate the waitlist and let people know that the time has passed to move into remote instruction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so motion on the floor to designate the 29th of January as the last day to switch to the remote option. On a roll call vote, I'll start with April.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So thanks for that. And the last bullet under the school instructional model discussion is the full return to school plan, which we've kind of touched on. Before I turn that over to Patty, who I assume is going to turn it over to administrators, I just wanted to clear one thing up. I, I try not to, you know, go too far into the, the Facebook stuff, if you want to call it that. But I did notice something on there regarding this particular bullet item that I did want to address. It seems that there was some, some concern, and I'm not sure if it was misconstruing the way that it was worded, but there was some comments made on a couple of the town Facebook pages of sort of a hostage situation, for lack of a better term, where the dollar amounts that were kind of assigned on that sheet were construed as, you know, if you want to get your kids back in school, you got to pony up more money. That was certainly not the intention. And just to kind of explain how the budget works a little bit, if you've been on these meetings for the past few weeks, you'll know that we have a fairly healthy surplus at the moment. So if there were, if that decision were to be made to get more kids back in the building, and it required things like desks instead of tables that we needed to spend money on, the district has that money. Really, the decision that you'd be making, if you were in favor of that, is if that money is not spent and the budget's still frozen for the most part, that money gets returned to the taxpayers at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, in the form of tax relief for the next fiscal year. Otherwise, you know, it would be spent on these items. So really, it was just a, a display of how much money would be used from our current budget to purchase those items or services. It was certainly not additional funds that we would have to come and ask for from the town or anything like that. So just wanted to make that really clear and I'll turn it over to Patty.
Thank you. I also don't want to lose sight of the conversation from a bullet or two above where we need to make a decision on what we're doing going forward. But to touch on the full remote plan, I think that a lot of thought and effort went into this, Andy, and you're right. It was in no way intended to create a grim picture. Unfortunately, if we are going to maintain social distancing as is currently required by the CDC, it is going to require us to purchase some materials to empty out some classrooms. And in some cases, even with purchasing desks, we would not be able to maintain that social distancing. And I think that's what the principals tried to call out in the plan, and that's why they use the, the method of splitting it out into columns so that you'd see what it would look like at every distance and what would need to happen. You know, I think that we do need to have the conversation about the metrics that we're going to use to determine when it is time to start forcefully planning for a full return. You know, is that something that the board wants to make a recommendation on in, you know, in the near future? Or are we going to say, okay, you know, right now, the numbers are so high and we're still required to do social distancing. We don't see that going away anytime soon. So we're going to, you know, recommend staying in the hybrid model for X amount of time. And during that time, we're going to, you know, start looking ahead when the vaccine is here. I, I was really excited earlier on, thinking that we were going to have a great end of the spring and maybe get to see the kids back full time, you know, in, in late spring to finish out the year. And now with the, the vaccine not being made available as quickly as we would like, I'm starting to get concerned. So I want to be mindful of that. And I think the decision does need to be made about when, when will, will it be feasible to have everyone come back? When, what is that day and how are we going to determine that day? And in terms of the parent choice, I think when, if and when everyone comes back this school year, we will have to look at that on a case by case basis because some of the staff that we've allocated to teaching remote classes, if everyone is back, we need those staff members in the building, working with the students. So I think there's a lot of moving parts that we need to have those conversations. But as I said earlier, our recommendation recommendation tonight is not to move forward now with a full return, but obviously we need to work on that planning. And I think giving some stability to the model for the next month would give us some time to move forward and, and do some planning together.
Thank you. So I guess discussion around that, like Patty said, going back to, you know, where do we go from here right now? Thoughts, feelings from the board on, on, you know, we're, we're, we've got a decision for this week and next. I think that's it. So.
So Andy, this is Anne. My question is, what is the timeframe that we're looking at now for the teachers to be on the list for vaccinations?
I, so I'll answer. If anybody else has any information, feel, feel free. I get some information as a state employee. DHHS has done a really good job of kind of keeping us apprised of the situation. And my wife's a teacher, so she gets some information through the Grapevine Network too. And it seems like a whole bunch of I don't know. I believe they just announced that, that they're going to be switching to, I can't remember if they're calling it phase two or phase one B pretty soon, which is senior citizens, and I think people under 55 with some health concerns. But the first phase, phase one A was longer than they anticipated it to be. So I'm kind of under the assumption that each phase is going to take a little longer than they proposed. The next phase that they are opening up within the next few days, five days, something like that, they are expecting a lot of people. And I can say that because I was asked, my whole agency, and I think most state employees were asked if we would be willing to put time in to work in the call centers. I believe they've already called the New Hampshire National Guard, and they've got a whole bunch of people from there that are going to answer the phones to basically coordinate, you know, making appointments and getting the vaccine out there. But they've asked pretty much every state employee if they'd be willing to help with that effort too. So they're expecting huge call volumes, which I assume will, you know, back things up for a while. But that, that was a really long way of saying, I don't think anybody knows right now. But there is, as Tori mentioned on the phone, there is a concerted effort from groups of teachers to, you know, push that the teachers be reclassified higher on that list. And personally, I would certainly support that, especially if any schools are thinking about getting kids back in the building sooner rather than later. I think that would be the fastest way to do it is if there were some sort of petition or some way to get teachers reclassified to be higher on that list.
Well, Andy, my question is because I got a phone call this, this afternoon stating that they are allowing age on Monday, age 65 and older for vaccinations, but anyone who has a medical condition that they, who are under 65 are able to sign up for that vaccination starting on Monday. So I think, you know, in discussions before, there were some teachers who were in a high risk, you know, being exposed to it. Would those teachers have an inkling on, you know, going in and getting on the list?
Yeah, I don't know what the criteria is, what they're saying are qualifying medical conditions, but I would hope that our most vulnerable would be able to do that. But I, to be perfectly honest, I haven't seen official words and, and how they're classifying everything. So I can't speak to that. I don't know if Patty's got any more.
I'll just start by saying that the, the reason I was disheartened is they opened, when they opened the window, they said March to May. So for people that are in March, it's, it's looking great. But if that window is more towards the end of May, and there needs to be a second dose a number of weeks apart, that's when I became pretty discouraged. I think it just depends on how quickly things move. But Kathy Mayer is here in the meeting, and I don't want to put her on the spot, but I would ask her if she has any information about the timeline that she could be allowed to speak.
Sure, Kathy, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So March to May is the guide, the target date for teachers. To answer Anne's question about high risk, there is a list of conditions. And at this time, it's with two or more conditions that are on that list that's published by the CDC, and it's also on the New Hampshire DHHS website. There are a number of different conditions. So people who do have two or more conditions would get bumped up to that one B category that they are vaccinating right as of right now. Also, and Friday opens up registration for the 65 and older. And they do begin vaccinating next week for, for that category for the 65 and older. So on the the staff would fall under two A. So once they begin, once they finish vaccinating the one B, they'll most likely start on the two A. I don't know if that kind of clears that up.
I just know that at the beginning, there was teachers that were concerned that they had, you know, extenuating circumstances that they, you know, are susceptible. So that I just wanted to be sure that they had the information out there that they may be able to get it sooner describing as of the 25th of January.
So I did send out a message to my staff at Pembroke Hill School that gave a link so that you could look and see where you fall on the vaccine schedule. And also when you were able to register for the vaccine. So there is like this little kind of worksheet that you can go and see what phase you are, you will be in. And at that point, any anybody who has medical conditions can reach out to their physician so that they can get on that list to register for the vaccine.
Very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Hey, it's Gene. I was looking into this. My dad's getting set up to get his vaccine, but I just glanced in at New Hampshire's. The group one B that's being able to start on Friday is approximately 300,000 people, and the state receives about 18, 17,000 to 18,000 vials of the vaccine a week. So if you do a little simple math, that comes out to 16, 17 weeks before we get through that group, which is four months, which puts us in May. So unless delivery comes up a lot, you know, it's kind of grim. You know, Patty was, you know, right in the way she was thinking about it. Unfortunately, the teachers aren't in that. And we're in a rough situation right now.
I had a question for Patty. I'm curious why you wouldn't pick a date like one to two weeks out from February vacation, just to mitigate against travel related risk during the vacation?
No, that's a great point. And I, we're certainly open to that. I think the request was more, you know, let's at least get some time to, you know, give the teachers, okay, we know for at least the next month, we're staying where we are. You're not going to have to worry every two weeks for a little bit of time that the model could potentially change unless we have to. You know, I I don't plan on recommending remote unless something happens at our school, like we talked about earlier on a daily basis, and we have to close. You know, if things are staying the way they are and the vaccine is is moving through, I think that we can hold strong on every day that we can be open to have students in the building. And that's, there's nothing more than we want than to have the students in the building. But we have, we do have some issues at different schools in terms of crowding and being able to socially distance and meet those requirements.
Yeah, I guess my two cents, I think it sounds like a lot of us are in the same boat here, but I do think it would be good to let the teachers have some advance notice of what's going on. And while I'm certainly not suggesting the board wouldn't talk about it at all for the next month or so. You know, making the declaration or making a motion that we're going to be remote for six weeks, or I'm sorry, not remote, but hybrid for six weeks or eight weeks or whatever it works out to be. I think is advantageous. It helps everybody settle back into hybrid and have a plan, be able to make a plan. Hopefully, the numbers start to come down. My my concern this week and next week is that we're going to be back in a position like we were before the holidays where even though we say we're hybrid, there's going to be a number of days that the schools have to be shut down because of lack of staff or too many cases or whatever. I hope that's not the case. I did see some news today, for what it's worth, that they think that the holiday travel bubble is starting to turn the other direction. So hopefully, the next week or two, that starts to level out, and we can get back to where we were, you know, in October, November. I just, I mean, we're, we're, the numbers around the country and locally are as high as they've ever been. You know, we're, we're not better than we were in March and April and May of last year. So I, as much as I've said before, it would help me as a school board member, as a father, as a husband, to have schools back to the way they always were. I don't reasonably see that happening in the next month or month and a half, you know, in through the month of February with the vaccine rollout being as slow as it is, and the numbers still being what they are. So I think I would be comfortable saying, you know, until February break. I I would be supportive of going two weeks past that to to, you know, mitigate the travel factor, as Amy mentioned. I don't know if folks feel like that's too long, but at least up until February break, I feel like saying, you know, the plan is to be hybrid until then. And again, we have the ability to revisit these decisions. This is more or less a statement to that that teachers and families can plan. If a miracle happened and it disappeared overnight, I'd be the first one calling a special meeting to reconsider and get people back in the building. And the other way, if things really went downhill again, and we felt we had to be remote, we could certainly take that action as if we had to. Also selfishly, we've still got some things that we have to do, and it's budget season and the board is busy as well. And and again, I think that we should keep this on the agenda in some capacity, but giving ourselves a couple of meetings where we don't have to spend an hour on this would help us get some of our work done too. And that's, it seems trivial, but it's important for the district. It's important that we get some of these policies taken care of. It's important that we are working on, you know, coordinating with the budget committee on the budget and the meetings that are involved in the budgeting process. All of this stuff has to get done. So I think, you know, not taking it off our plate, but maybe moving it to the back burner a little bit for a couple of meetings would help us out a lot too. So that's where I'm at.
Andy, this is Amy. I'd like to make a motion. It has three parts. It is to move that the schools remain in hybrid through Friday, March 12. For the board to revisit the model of instruction on February 16. And with direction that the administration continue to make every effort to maximize the frequency and number of students in the building and to provide us with further information on that at our February 16 meeting. So like, for example, if surveys need to be done, like, let's do them. You know, if if there's more information that needs to be gotten, let's get it. And it would be my hope that you know, after March 12, that that following Monday, you know, something even slightly different than the current hybrid would be able to occur. Yeah, I'll email you, Sandy. Yeah. Yeah.
Amy, could you give me just the date one more time?
Sure, Friday, March 12.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so discussion. So I think just for my clarification, that is two weeks out from February break. Right? February break is the last full week of February. Is that correct?
That's what I'm intending. If I messed up the dates, please someone say so.
I think that's right. The the week of the 22nd of February is break week. Is that correct, Patty? Okay. So discussion around the motion.
This is Ann. When you were, have had a discussion before the motion, you were saying that, you know, something changes, we could get back in, you'd call it emergency meeting. So if we did that, what timeframe would we be giving the teachers, the admin, time to make a switch?
I think we'd have to make that decision then, you know, I I don't foresee that happening. I mean, at least not in in the direction of getting everybody back in school, right? It's the the situation of all of a sudden, the virus isn't a concern anymore is just not practical. I think if an emergency situation were to occur, sadly, it would be in the other direction where, hey, you know, it hit the fan again, and we need to pull everybody out of there for safety. And not knowing what that situation would be, I don't, I don't know what kind of notice we would give, but we could make that decision then really. You know, if this motion were to pass, then as we've seen in the past, one of the people in the majority that passed it would need to ask for a vote to reconsider. And again, if it were an emergency situation, I'd be happy to be that person. And then, once we reopen that question, everything's on the table. So if it were a true emergency and we felt like people were in immediate danger, we could say, hey, tomorrow, school's closed, or tomorrow, school's open. I usually like to operate in the capacity of giving people some sort of notice. So but again, that's, it's a decision that we would make in that moment.
Okay, all right. So if we had a situation and we were all cured the next day, we would still give the admin at least a couple of week notice?
I, that'd be my intention. But again, it'd be, you know, it would be up to the board as a whole.
Okay.
Through throughout this now, that's what we've been trying to do is give a couple of week notice on any changes that we vote on as a board. And, you know, it's my hope that, you know, this vaccine rollout starts going a lot faster, and maybe by March, the numbers really are plummeting, and we can really start thinking about that that full return. You know, that's my hope. And I think that's, you know, realistic, but I'm going to hold on to that as we move forward here because, you know, we really need to get the kids back in there full time.
Andy, this is April. I need some information in order to make an informed decision. So what is the date of the school district elections? And also, this is more of a curiosity question. When is the last day that a resident can declare residency, I mean, excuse me, declare their candidacy at the SAU office? That's more of, but I'm, I'd like to know that because I'm personally not comfortable with the motion that may be binding on a brand new board.
Andy, this is Ann. The vote is March 9.
Thank you, Ann. Do we have any information or could we ask our superintendent the last day to declare candidacy, just as a FYI?
Do you know that?
Yeah, Ann probably knows too, so she can correct me, but I believe it's the 20th to the 29th of January.
Thank you very much.
And I would say, I believe this is a year where there's only one seat up. So I I get your intention, and I think I agree with it in principle, but it would be minimum impact in that, you know, two out of three years, we have two seats available, and this year it's only one. So the impact of somebody coming in under something the rest of us had decided would be minimized somewhat. Any other questions around this motion? And Amy, if you want to prepare, when I call the question, I'm going to have you read it again, because I can't remember all three things. Or at least not as eloquently as you put them.
Got it.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and call the questions. So there's a motion on the floor. Amy, take it away.
The motion is we continue in hybrid through Mark Friday, March 12. To revisit the model of instruction at the board's meeting on February 16. And with direction that the administration continue to make every effort to propose how to get as many kids back into the schools as soon as possible at the February 16 meeting.
On a roll call vote, I will start with Gene.
Yes.
April.
No.
Ann?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So the motion carries.
Andy, this is Amy. I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I'm not making this motion right now. I'm putting out a feeler about this motion, and I'd like to hear from the board and the administration. But here's what it would be if I made it. And this is to address the fact that being in hybrid for such a long period of time with such high COVID numbers could create a tremendous amount of inconsistency. So the motion would be during the period of time when the schools are operating in hybrid, if a school building needed to be closed related to the pandemic for three days with one calendar week, that school building shall be closed, and that school shall be remote for a period of the following 10 school days.
Andy, this is Ann. My question is, what if it's Pembroke Academy and they have games and such?
Amy, I know you're just kind of looking for feelings. Is it, you, you want to respond to that or?
I mean, I would defer to Dan, but what we did before, when we went into a planned full time remote is sports still happened. So I'm not sure how that would play out under this kind of scenario. But I I think that's, first, I would want to see if like this concept is helpful, if people think this concept might be helpful, because if not, then we don't need to go to that second level of thinking, I don't think.
Right. Personally, I think I like where your head's at. 10, 10 additional days seems like a lot to me. If it were like finish out that week and then the next week be closed, I think I'd be a little more comfortable. My my main concern with it, and I think my opinion on this, I should say, would sway with what the case numbers are looking like. You know, if we get in trouble, I'd be more apt to to support something like this. But my big concern with it is, it seems like the kind of thing that the sending schools might have a problem with. And not that I generally let that make decisions for me, but I can see some of the other towns balking at, you know, a possibility of what 13 straight business days without being in the building. So I I think I like the principle of it, but I'm not sure. I don't think I would support that long of a timeframe, but if there, if it was a little bit shorter, I might. I don't know. I guess I'm anxious to hear what what the other board members would say as well.
This is April. To default to the recommendations of the advising government entities such as DHHS.
Patty had her hand up.
I I like and appreciate what you're thinking, Amy. I guess my thoughts are that we try to get back into session as soon as possible. And sometimes the that we have to close for contact tracing. And if they come back and say, hey, we finished our contact tracing in two days and only one classroom needs to quarantine, then on that final day, I would like to get everyone back as soon as possible. So that's kind of been my approach. I like the flexibility. I think I already have the authority to say, you know, there's something going on. I don't feel good about this. We don't have enough information. We're going to stay closed until, you know, we've heard from, for instance, DHHS that we're okay, and they're finished what they need to do. I think I would, you know, if we were out for four days, we would probably talk to the administrative team and say, does it make sense to come back only on a Friday? Maybe not. And I think if the recommendation was to stay remote longer, then I would call a board meeting, because I think it would probably be something bigger going on than that. So I would just hate to have to automatically go with that 10 days, because there's so many different circumstances.
My concern is that there is no recommendation in place that sort of says like, this isn't working. You know, like if we say, let's do hybrid for the, you know, the last part of January, all of February and the week and a half of March, which we have now said we're going to do. And it's like, you know, two days this week, PA is closed. One day next week, PA is closed. Three days a week after that, PA is closed. Three days a week after that, PA is closed. Even though in each of those instances, it was able to like reopen within a day or two, I feel like overall, maybe it's not working. Like maybe that's not tenable to just do that for two months. That's my concern.
So
Any other comments?
This is Ann. I'm, I apologize, Amy. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So what you're saying that if they have to close for three days of the week, that we automatically go remote?
Yes, per, for the school building, not the school district.
Okay. So my second question is, so the concern is that we don't want people to be exposed. So if we had that situation and we went remote, why wouldn't you just shut the building down so we don't continue to be exposed?
I think that's what I'm saying, but I'm also trying to just explore if there's anything that we can do to minimize the inconsistency that we might be headed towards.
Okay. My question is, so if we're concerned about people being in contact, why wouldn't we just not allow anyone in the building? Why would we continue with sports? Why would we let, you know, other towns come in and participate? I just, I don't think I understand the whole thing. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It sounds like there's no, this isn't striking at least a bunch of people as like, yes, we should definitely do something like this. So I think we can let it go.
Okay. So anything else around school instructional month before we move on to the next agenda item? I apologize if you can hear my dog cleaning up his bowl in the background. All right. So 7C, the March meeting. Patty, I'm not sure if you've got specific things prepared that, that you want to say about this one?
Uh, no, we just wanted to put it on the agenda. I, I don't think all board members were at the last meeting and probably certainly not this number of participants. So Andy, I don't know if you want to summarize what the, the outcome of that meeting was and what we've been talking about with the MBC. If not, I'm happy to take it.
Yeah. So correct me if I'm wrong, but so there was a discussion last time around. It was an added meeting last Monday specifically to have a conversation about how the, the meetings are going to be handled in March, both the school district meeting, the town meeting and the public hearing that happens in February that pertains to those meetings. It was overwhelming feeling of both the board and the MBC and the moderator and I think the select board and everybody involved, that being on the same page, the school board and the town being on the same page was in the best interest of, of everybody in town. And I guess to not go into it too much, the, the decisions that were made were for the time being, the public hearing is still going to be planned for. I don't have the date off the top of my head, maybe Ann does, but the, the same date in February that it was originally planned for. But it will be a virtual meeting. Go ahead, Ann.
February 4.
Thank you. So it will be a virtual meeting. It's going to be, we're, we're going to hold it because we've done, you know, multiple hundreds of people on these school board meetings before. The, the go-to meeting or whatever it is, the software that the town uses has not been quite as smooth. But the earlier school board meetings where we had a couple 300 people on were, were okay. So we're going to do it that way. We're going to distribute as much material as we can ahead of time, both on the website and some printed copies, I think at town hall so that people can look at things. I will also plan to present documents, both for the school board and the MBC during that meeting on this platform. So that people will be able to see that information in real time. And hopefully that goes smooth for everybody. We'll have, I think, I think Patty's already created the meeting. I think that that information has already been sent to town. So I believe that there's going to be information posted on the town website soon if it hasn't been already with, you know, the meeting link and the time and information and all that stuff. So hopefully that's accessible. I, I think that our school board meetings have definitely been better attended than they ever have been since we've been online. And I don't know if that has to do with the volatility of the subject matter or the ease of access or some combination thereof, but we're hoping that this leads to a good turnout. The other piece is the meetings that are usually scheduled on the Saturdays in March. Those meetings are still technically going to be scheduled for those dates in accordance with state RSAs. But there's a belief between the town, the moderator and the school board that we have a legal way to basically postpone those meetings. I'm not sure if we've settled on an actual firm date for them yet, but I believe we're looking at end of May, possibly beginning of June. I think the intention right now is to have those meetings in person, but hopefully have them outside. And there's still a lot of details to iron out, but basically we want people to be able to attend those meetings if possible with the least amount of concern for, you know, keeping themselves healthy and worrying about the, the virus. Hopefully vaccine rollout has made some progress by that point. And we can be outdoors and have some social distancing and still, you know, get the business of the town and the school accomplished. So that's kind of what it's looking like right now. As board chair, super happy with the, the coordination with the MBC and with the town administrator and the moderator and everything so far. So I, I think Patty, did I miss anything important?
No, I think you covered it. That's great.
So I guess just stay tuned. I'm sure we'll mention it more here. Tune into the MBC meetings. They're going to talk about it there. Check the town website. I'm sure when it gets closer, we'll probably have it posted on the school sign so that everybody's aware of things coming up. But if you, if you're a person that wants to be involved or you're a person that, you know, wants to pass that information along to your friends and neighbors, certainly do so. That's kind of the rough plan for right now. Are there any questions about that?
Andy, this is Ann. We're still going to have the elections in person on March 9 at Pembroke Academy. Is that correct, Patty?
Yep. As far as I know, that's correct. And, you know, that I gotta say, that's, that is due in great part to the success of, of the elections in November. Everybody, the checklist supervisors and everybody on the town side did a great job. And I think that everybody feels very comfortable that we can do that in a safe fashion again in March.
Excellent. My second question is, speaking to legal on your last meeting for the budget, do we physically have to mail this information out seven days prior to all of the 5,000 registered voters?
I think so. I can't remember where we landed on that. I believe that the answer was yes. And I believe that there was a conversation that David and Patty were going to work together to, to share that cost so we could send everything out on the same, on the same notice. Is that right, Patty?
I am still working with our attorney on all of the details, but I believe that requirement only existed if we were going to take part in the virtual option. So now that we are, are probably going to postpone because of an emergency, all the same legal posting requirements would happen. So we would still have the warrant posted at the right time. We are lucky enough to have access to information like we never have been. So we're going to put everything on the town website, everything on the school website. We're going to make hard copies that people can pick up either the town hall or the SAU office. So we will have everything available for anyone that wants it. But I don't believe that mailing requirement exists unless we were to choose that virtual option.
But we're doing the virtual for February, so don't we have to mail for that one?
That's not part of the alternative process laid out by the state in, was it 11? I can't remember the RSA number. So I thi- I think it's a different situation. That being said, as Patty kind of mentioned, there was a lot of discussion about getting as much information out there as we possibly can. And, and again, making paper copies available at the town hall if necessary and trying to make sure that everybody that needs the information can get the information any way that we can deliver it to them.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that on the selectmen's side, we weren't behind. If there's something that we have to hurry up and get, get, and get going because it's weeks away now.
Yep. And, and I guess the one other thing to mention, something that you said made it pop up in my mind. There wasn't a decision, but there was some consideration to, the RSA says that you have to have your public hearing, at least I think it's 25 days prior to the meetings. And that will obviously take place if we're postponing the meetings, but there was some discussion around the fact that if we have a public hearing in February 4th and then the meetings aren't held until a long time later, that some of that information may be stale or some people may have forgotten or whatever. And the RSA does stipulate that you can have additional either public hearings or just information sessions, which is just a difference in how they have to be posted or whatever. So there, there was some conversation about possibly hosting another additional session a little bit closer to when those, those meetings would actually take place to update people, refresh their memory and things like that. So that's yet to be determined.
Okay. And the last question I had, Andy, is the moderator for the school, is that elected every two years? Because the town moderator is elected every year.
Then yes. If you wouldn't have finished that sentence, I couldn't have answered you. But somebody asked, asked Tom, because as you know, Tom Seraphin is both. And he told us that he couldn't remember. He just knew that one of them was every two years and one of them was every year. And he couldn't remember which was which, so.
Okay. But if we do have a different town moderator, then the, the meetings might change. But everything will be posted either virtually or flyers, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure the selectmen weren't behind the ball. Thank you.
No, David's been pretty on top of it and yeah, it's, it's all very complicated and fun this year. So, okay, with that, we will move to 7D, which is a draft of next year's school calendars. I'll turn it over to Patty.
So we're just beginning the process of reviewing the school calendars. We've put the Concord School District calendar in the drive for you to review. They've recently finalized their contract and that's always the starting point for the entire SAU. We try to stick to at least the same school vacations. And as Dan mentioned earlier, our schedules are coordinated around our students that go to CRTC. And we also try to coordinate with our sending towns. Typically it trickles down. It starts with Concord and then Pembroke approves theirs and then the AREA districts take a look at their calendars. And we try to stay in sync as much as possible. We have a leadership team meeting tomorrow and we will be looking at this as the administrators in each of our buildings to try and talk about our professional development days and aligning as many days as we can. And we've also started gathering staff feedback. So we are in the middle of the process, but did want to put out Concord's calendar in case you haven't seen it as at least a starting point for you.
Great. Don't think there's a ton to talk about here, but if anybody has any questions, go right ahead.
Andy, this is Ann. March 8 of 2022 will be an election. And I know the school is open that day.
That's the Concord calendar, Ann. So our, we haven't shared a Pembroke draft yet, but that's traditionally our SAU-wide professional development day. So I would see no reason why that wouldn't be what we would propose to you again for next year.
Oh, perfect. And we don't have to worry about a November election. Yay.
Others? Okay. Thanks, Patty. Appreciate that. Keep us in the loop. And we'll move on to 7E, which is an update on the current year budget. Amber, do you have anything for us?
I do. Currently we are at 968,000, approximately. That does include some of the items that were agreed upon to be spent in this year have been done, but there are still more to be done. Some of the changes that have happened are in some of the updated invoices for specialized is really the biggest changes that occurred. The other thing I took a look at, I took a look at a little bit at the revenue and I am seeing that we do have, or we will have some additional cat aid greater than we had anticipated approximately as of this morning, which actually should be pretty much done because we usually get cat aid in December. 38,000 additional there. And then we have some boat tuition that wasn't anticipated. That is about 14,000 and sped charter 14,000. So as of right now, those are some additional funding revenue sources that were not anticipated.
Great. Questions for Amber about this year. Okay, we can move right into 7F then, which is next year's budget. Amber, do you, if you have changes or anything you want to discuss, go ahead. If not, I can give an update on where things are at with the MBC.
Andy, this is Ann. I'm sorry. I just had a quick question. So the $118,000 that we approved to, to be spent, is that taken out of the budget that was presented to the budget committee last week?
Yes, that was taken out of, yes, that was taken out before we presented it to them.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
Yep. So I guess I'll jump in with kind of, this is sort of a board report, but I'll do it now since we're talking about it. Conversation with the MBC on Thursday went just as you would expect it to go. They're obviously looking for a little bit less or a lot bit less. So trying to summarize the discussion a little bit, I guess. The initial look at the tax impact sheet would show that the number that we proposed would lead to an overall tax rate increase of about 9.6%. Now, I, I ran some numbers today and adding in the 99,000 and change that we just approved for the pair contract, if in fact they ratify their end of that, that would raise that number to more like 10.1%. I cautioned the board, or I'm sorry, the committee, that that is a, a false number. It, it is a starting point really. And to put that into context, for those of you listening in the public, you'll remember last year's meeting, if you came, there was what I called a big scary number. And it was somewhere around 10 and a half percent, I think. And there was talk that if we approved the, the budget and the teacher's contract, that that might be more like 12 and a half percent. And, and you'll remember it did pass. It passed very slimly. But now that the tax rate for that year has actually been set and we can look back at it, the actual tax rate increase after all that stuff passed was 4.3%. And the reason that this happens, and it happens every single year, is that school districts are not allowed to keep money that they have left over at the end of the year. So if the town had, you know, brings in whatever, $6 million worth of revenue and they only spend $5 million of it, then that million dollars that's left over rolls over to the next year. In a school district, we're not allowed to do that. So every year, almost every year, we give back something. In many years, we give back a large portion. And as you, you heard Amber say, there's, there's a surplus of 800 and something thousand right now. If nothing crazy happens, that amount would go back to offset taxes in, in the following fiscal year. So, you know, last year, we returned, I think it was $677,000 and change, which dropped that big scary number down to something much more reasonable. So it's tough to look at the numbers on the tax impact sheet because they certainly have meaning. But it's, the number is never, ever, ever going to match up once the tax rate is actually set. So I just wanted to kind of put that perspective out there. It's tough to know what these numbers actually look like. So that being said, if you, I, I ran some numbers and told the municipal budget committee, if we assumed like a $700,000 surplus at the end of the year after we paid for our warrant articles, that we actually returned to, to offset taxes, that would bring that 9.6% projected increase down to about 6.4, 6.44%, including the paraprofessional contract. So that's still high. And they asked us to look and take a hard line and look at what we may be able to do. There were a few areas that they were particularly concerned with. One was staff. There were some feelings that our staffing levels were too high and that was mostly predicated on enrollment numbers have dropped somewhat consistently for the past eight, 10 years. And our staff numbers had, have not followed along with that. And some of it was just simply, you know, we need to take some money out of this budget and the easiest, fastest way to do that is looking at staff lines. Because they represent, you know, salaries and benefits that total decent chunks of change. So staffing was one of them. Another area of concern was that surplus that I was talking about. And the feeling is, again, those numbers are hard to figure out what they're actually going to be when the tax rate is set because that surplus throws everything off so much. So the feeling was, well, let's try not to have such a big surplus. And that's a point that I agree with, but it's not quite as simple as that. So for example, if we did return seven hundred thousand dollars this year, that would certainly help with the tax rate. But we got to look at how we got to that seven hundred thousand dollars. And if everybody remembers, we Patty froze the budget way back in September. So there's a lot of stuff that we didn't spend money on and haven't spent money on, don't intend to spend money on this fiscal year that maybe we should have because now we're going to have to spend money on it sometime later. And it's hard to say if we did all that, what what the surplus might look like. And the other thing to keep in mind on that, I think, is you can't aim for zero when you're talking about a school budget. Because if you come in low by 10 bucks, we have to have a special meeting and go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we didn't bring in enough tax money. Sorry about that. Can we please have 10 bucks? So you have to build in some sort of buffer. And I, but I agree with them that returning six hundred, seven hundred, a million dollars every year is is not where we want to be. So they asked us to see if we could, we could creatively find a way maybe to hone in on our number a little bit better to hopefully end our years with a smaller surplus because that would kind of help stabilize things. So there was staffing, there was the surplus, and then the other big one was the, what I call the CIP warrant article. As you all know, we have one warrant article this year at the end of the warrant for, I believe it's one hundred and ninety seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That's to fund a whole bunch of projects that CIP knows about. And it's, it's kind of setting us up to get projects done in the future as they come up. Jerry Flurry pointed out that there's never been a warrant article even close to that from the school side. And in his estimation, if you add up all the warrant articles each year, they haven't come anywhere near that number. So that was their other area of concern. So, you know, we can certainly have discussion tonight, but I think those are the three areas that we should all be thinking about a little bit. You know, can we save some money somewhere? I, I'm certainly supportive of the work that the superintendent and our administration did in putting together these budgets. I'm also sympathetic to the taxpayers and the current situation and knowing that, you know, anything we can do to help out is is certainly appreciated. So I think we do need to take a look and, you know, I certainly didn't make them any promises as far as cutting money out of the budget, but I did tell them that I would bring this information back to you and that we would, that we would take a look. So I guess Patty's got any input before before I open it up for questions or comments.
Thanks, Andy. So after that meeting, as you very described very well, the NBC is looking for us to have conversations tonight and they're anxious to see if there's any wiggle room to meet them a little bit closer to to the rate that they think we need to be at. We did talk about staffing and I, that's something that we talk about every year. And I would, there are new board members. So for those of you who may not know, I would remind you that we have made some significant staff cuts. We've looked at those as we've gone along because this is something that people bring up every year and say, oh, you haven't made staff cuts. And we go back and say, yes, this is where we made all of those staff cuts. I can just give you one example in the, at the elementary level, we used to have five teachers per grade level. And as the enrollment went down every single year, we were cutting a teacher like, okay, so now it's now it's going down to second grade. We're going to go to four teachers. This third grade, we're going to go to four teachers. So we did that all the way through. We now have four teachers per grade level in our K four Hill School. At Three Rivers School, we did also cut a teacher when we had a bubble of students that were going up that there were less students and we cut a fifth grade teacher. We had cut, we had shared some resources with Hill School. We had cut some office support staff. So we have made cuts as our enrollment has declined and made the decision that the staff was going to be the lowest thing on our list to propose to cut this year. So we did take a hard look at the budget and I do have some notes to share with you that were a result of the administrative team meeting that we had this morning and we invited Josh. Amber did work with the food service staff and with our director and came up with fifty three thousand dollars in cuts that we think we could make from the food service budget. So if it's okay, I'm just going to go through the things that we talked about and then we can circle back because I have a lot of numbers I know that I, that I don't didn't get to put in front of you. And the facilities end, Josh talked about, I think it was approximately ninety one thousand dollars. If we take out all of the projects that we had planned for this, for this proposed budget for next year. So that would be things like our asbestos abatements that we do a little bit of with the goal of getting rid of it eventually. Some water fountains, sink replacement, backstop replacements at at Three Rivers. So if we're at the point where we're saying this is, this budget cannot be supported and it's too much, then those are the types of things that we need to think about. Can we put off for another year, knowing that, yes, we might get a little bit behind. And then at Pembroke Academy, we talked about taking a pretty big chunk out of our computer replacement line. We are very concerned about this line for the future because we did get the grant funding that we chose to put a lot toward technology to be able to get a device in every student's hands. That's going to really hurt our computer replacement cycle for the future because everyone got all this great stuff and they're all gonna want it replaced when it reaches end of life in a few years. So, but for next year, can we cut back on our computer replacement? Since we did purchase some new stuff this year, I think we can do that. Just keeping in mind that it's going to go back up in the future and that never looks good. Some things like books and furniture, computer replacement, again, at Three Rivers School, took some supply, look at some supplies, some furniture, some other little stuff. And then Wendy has approximately fifty thousand dollars at Hill School, same thing, some technology and we're working on figures for cutting a paraprofessional. So all in all, I know that was a really quick overview. That would come to approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So you know, some of that is a little, you know, concerning in terms of our facilities work that we've tried to keep up with. But at the same time, we're looking at a pretty significant budget increase this year and we wanted to do whatever we could to present you with some options for your consideration. And that's what we came up with this morning.
Thanks Patty. Is, if you don't mind, before I open it up, if Josh is available, I had a question regarding the the warrant article and if there's wiggle room there and I obviously understand the idea of planning for the future and everything. But I guess I'm getting, I'm wondering if, if how you feel about if that one ninety seven five were reduced to, you know, by a third, down to one twenty or cut in half? Or if if it's really, in your opinion, not feasible to touch that dollar amount and keep it the same because those things have to be funded. Just trying to get an idea of, you know, what the impact of of lowering that number might be.
So I think the, the number is as accurate as we can get it today for tomorrow. With that being said, pushing it off every year, that number is just going to grow, whether it's, it's growing in one warrant article or by the time we finally pay for whatever that project is, that project's going to grow on us. So that's just being honest to the system. But with that completely understanding and respecting this process, personally, I would say anything is better than nothing. So if if we were gonna, if I was asking for ten dollars and you were to say, well, we're going to give you six, I would respect that decision. And we would, we would push things out and we would do what we can do when we can do them. And if we get to that point, what, which, when I always say, what's another year? When we get to the point that that year's up, I'm just going to be honest, when, when that time comes up and say a boiler has gone on us and we haven't physically replaced it yet, I'm just going to say this, this is some of the items we've talked about. And unfortunately, we need that boiler now, not next year. So I would support it.
Thank you. So along those same lines, and I apologize to my board mates for monopolizing questions. I've just got things on my mind. So I don't remember off the top of my head what, what the big ticket items in that one ninety seven five were. So when you say things like a boiler, like I get that, are there things in there where if they did go and it was a, hey, we, this is broken. Now we need it right now. Are there items in there that we could pay for out of our trusts? And and just for background, one of the reasons I'm asking that is in a, in a couple of NBC meetings now, Jerry has cautioned us, as, as people may or may not know, Jerry Flurry was trustee of trust funds for God knows how long in Pembroke. And he is, he is finally actually stepped down. And that's sad because he saved us a lot of money because he's a real smart guy and he's been doing a lot of work for the town. That, those funds are now managed by TD Wealth or some other thing. And the interest on them is so low at the moment that all of our funds like that are losing money. There are fees monthly associated with those accounts and those fees are bigger than what they're gaining in interest. So reserves or trust funds that we have sitting, as he tells it, are currently losing money. So while I certainly understand the need for and would advocate for keeping a healthy amount of reserve in those trusts, it may be a good time to start thinking about using some of that money on some of those projects, if in fact that's an option. So I guess that's my question is, is it an option? Today, like if we said, hey, let's take sixty thousand dollars out of that warrant article, could we fund it from, from any of our trusts? And corollary, in an emergency situation like a dead boiler, are there items like that that could be paid for out of trust?
I think they all could be paid out of trust. And I think Patty would correct, could correct me if I'm wrong on this specific trust. But we have one option on this trust per year. And that's the March meeting as opposed to the other trusts we, we have. You guys are agents to expend and we can call a special meeting at any given time. With that, one reason why this number has skyrocketed over the last year is we did hire an architect firm to go over some ADA upgrades. And with that, that number grew significantly because we identified roughly seventy, hundred thousand dollars worth of ADA upgrades specifically within, I know I say the district, but it's specifically within Pembroke Academy. So that's why in Jerry's world, you know, he sees these numbers. We talk about these numbers every year. That's why this number has grown significantly, I believe, this year, but I might have had that number in last year on a, the warrant that failed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry again. Any other board members? Questions for Josh? Questions for Patty? Questions about the, the budget for next year, where we're at in the process, anything?
And I understand the problem with budgets that, you know, we had, you know, I do the, the selectman budget. It's very, very difficult. But the question I have is the amount of money that we've been given back for surplus, why weren't we putting that money into these items that have been needed to be repaired prior?
I guess I'd have to defer to Patty and Josh. I know, at least for the past few years, there's been, you know, significant pressure, if you want to call it that, to, to return as much as we possibly can for tax relief. And we've made a concerted effort to do that, going back to at least to two thousand seventeen when we had a revenue shortfall. The board at that time kind of made a kind of sort of promise to return as much as they possibly can. And that year it topped over a million dollars. So from my perspective, it's just been trying to do as much as we can to to help taxpayers. But I don't know if there are specific years or items Patty or Josh that you want to, to talk about that, you know, maybe we could have done.
I'll let Patty start. It looks like she's ready.
Sure. So Andy, you said some of the things that I was going to say that, and, you know, and I'll say pressure, not meaning it, you know, in a negative way, but when we had a revenue shortfall, the board did promise and we all rallied and said, like, hey, we can't, our tax rate can't handle a million dollar loss in revenue for tuition. So we need to figure something out. So we did immediately freeze the budget. And we were able to turn that back. But all, every time we've had a significant surplus, we have frozen the budget for one reason or another, for, you know, for tax relief or something happened. This year it was COVID. We don't know what's going to happen. We didn't know what it was going to look like. So we froze the budget immediately so that we didn't get ourselves into trouble. And by doing that and turning back the funds, it just perpetuates itself. And now, okay, well, we didn't buy science books. We didn't buy science books. But hey, we need science books. So it's not that we had a cushion in there anywhere. We, we did not get things that we needed. We were short staffed because we didn't fill positions. There are a whole host of things that didn't occur because of those freezes and that, and amount of money that we returned. Some of them were unanticipated things like we may have had special education costs that didn't come to fruition. The board can decide at the end of every single year and they always have that option to say, okay, we're looking at turning back a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus. Let's turn back five and let's take two. And Josh, what's, what's the most important thing to get done? And we have done that in past years, but that's something that the board has to decide at the end of each school year.
And I would just piggyback a couple of years back. The prior boards asked us to, instead of labeling an item and asking for a hundred thousand dollars this year, they really asked us to go five, 10 years out, identify the needs of the district, which really hadn't been done in the past. And to try and break that up. So say it was ten dollars to say you'd need it, we needed a boiler in five years for ten dollars and we're going to ask for two of it every year as opposed to coming and asking for that ten all at once. So just to piggyback a little bit on that.
So that's why it's, it's, so that's why we're eventually catching up to it at this point. I did have a question for Patty when she was saying that we have reduced staff. You know, we used to have five teachers in each grade for K two four. Now we're down to four. But that was back in sixteen, seventeen. I'm looking at seventeen, eighteen. And we did have only two grades that had five teachers. So what year was that, that we cut elementary back that far?
We, when that enrollment decline came through the elementary school, we, I think we cut one teacher every year. So it would have happened over probably a five year span. I would have to look back, but that's what my memory serves is every time that, that class came through that had lower enrollment, we'd cut a teacher out of that grade level. And as those kids moved through and if the class sizes stayed small, we continued cutting one teacher per grade level over that five year period.
Because I don't see that at all at the Hill. We still had the same numbers. Seventeen, eighteen, we had five teachers for fourth grade and five teachers for second. But up and continually on, we haven't cut at all for the staffing. So I'm thinking that's probably where the Budget Committee was, was questioning. But as a devil advocate, I've sat on the Budget Committee. And when we've talked to the school and saying, yes, you know, you froze the budget. But when asked what, you know, what, what part of the education had declined? And we never got anything. So I think we need to come back with, yes, we froze the budget, but here is where the education declined. I think that would help us with the Budget Committee.
Right. And I think sometimes it's not as obvious as the quality of education goes down. But I mean, just in my time, I've seen, I believe every budget that I've seen, both on the board and the years that I was paying attention before I was a member of the board, there's been science books there. And every year they've gotten cut. And I, I think that sometimes our teachers do such a good job of getting by with what they have to get by with that it's almost detrimental. Because as we push them to do more with less, they get better at doing that. And, and so there's this feeling like, okay, well, they can do better with less. And I'm not sure that that's fair. And I remember last year when we were having this conversation, Josh was telling us about how he was having some of his staff spend time disassembling old desks and Frankensteining together. You know, a foot from this desk and a leg from that desk so that they could come up with one desk uh, for a high school classroom or something like that. And at some point there's some opportunity cost. And if you, if you're not going to buy desks, but you're going to pay a maintenance staff person an hourly rate to build desks, um, you know, you may not actually be making out on that. And the other example that I gave the budget committee when talking more about staff is, I think it was two years ago now, maybe it was three. Um, we ended up cutting a, I say we, I wasn't on the board at that time. Um, but a speech pathologist was cut at the Hill School, or I'm sorry, at, at Three Rivers. And, you know, it was determined that the need wasn't there and, and we were asked to make cuts and that was one of the cuts that we made. And the very next year, there was somebody, there was a student that needed those services and were, you know, required to provide those services and we had, we didn't have anybody on staff. So we had contracted services. And if I remember right, the bill for the contracted services that year came real close to a quarter million dollars, which is far more um, than we would have spent just having that staff member still on the books. So I'm not, not telling you anything you don't know, Anne, um, just kind of laying out some of these things for the public to say, just to say, you know, making these cuts isn't always just as straightforward as can we get by next year or, um, you know, is this staff person in demand right now? Because they could be tomorrow. Um, and could we get by one more year without the desks or one more year without the science books? Sure. But similar to what Josh is saying about the facilities, um, you know, if you kick the can down the road far enough, sooner or later it's going to turn around and end up with a $197,000 warrant article.
Right. And I, I understand that Andy, because, you know, sitting on budget, but the hard part is when you say that you had to hire a paraprofessional, spend $200,000 on that position, we were still able to give back money. So, you know, I, I think it's hard. The budget committee needs details and I know it's, it is a lot of work. Um, but I don't think we should think, unfortunately, I don't think staff cutting is, should be at the bottom of the list. I've got four positions at the town that we need to add. Dave Joden does three jobs. We have not been able to add those two positions, three positions back in because we, the town's not going to be able to support that budget. Dave retires, then we're hitting the taxpayers with four new positions. So unfortunately I, I think we do have to look at staff. Um, because at this point we're, we're taking so much away from the current teachers. That's just my, my thoughts.
Um, and just to respond to you a little bit, so Dave's, you know, wearing, I know, like 20 hats right now. I get that. Um, but you need to hire four people on the town side to fill his position when he retires. Well, he's retiring very soon and basically by not hiring these people now, you're kicking that can down the road, not training these people into these positions when Dave, for, for, when Dave is gone, you're kicking the can down the road. Um, in the same manner that, you know, we cut some staff here, we don't do repairs there. Um, it, it's, it's all the same thing. But, you know, not to get locked up in this whole discussion about, you, you know, why and how and what. Um, I think we should move on to actually talking about what we're going to do about this. I, I believe, what was the number, Andy? 600,000? That Mike threw out there?
I, I honestly don't remember him giving a particular number. Mike many times talks in terms of percentages and um, 3% was the number that he was looking at. Um, but that's, yeah, I think we're at like 3.8% right now as far as appropriations. Um, total tax rate is a different story, but if he said, if he said a number like 600,000, I missed it and I apologize.
But Andy, I, I thought this meeting, I thought they, they said our increase was 14.48%.
So that it, it was, um, but that was a particular number. So let me, I've got my tax impact sheet here. So this is another problem, um, in my opinion, on just how this whole process works out is, is you, there's a lot of numbers on this tax impact sheet and if you, you can pick kind of the scariest one you want. So the net amount to be raised by taxes on the school side is up 14.9%. Um, our appropriations, the amount of money we're asking for and saying, hey, we need this money to run our schools is only up 3.6%. But because our revenues from the state side are down, um, by a lot, four and a half percent, I think. Um, the debt amount to be raised by taxes is 14.9%. And again, the, the estimated impact on the tax rate is 9.6% if you don't, if you consider that we would give back no surplus. Um, so there's lots of numbers here. 14.9 is the net amount to be raised by taxes. Um, to me, that's not one of the main numbers here. I think, I think the main numbers are appropriations. What are we actually asking for? Because in my view, that's the number we can actually control, right? We can't control revenues. Um, and then the other most important number obviously is the actual impact on the tax rate, because that's what's happening to people in their homes.
Andy, Amber had been waving before. Amber, did you have something to say?
Sorry about that. I can only see two little windows right now because I have the budget open.
Well, the first thing is the school portion increase on that particular tax sheet that the town uses 13.2. Um, but what I wanted to mention was, um, when Anne mentioned like, how is it affected education? It, it, it ha, I mean, it always will when they can't get what we need. But at the same time, the biggest, one of the lines that nine out of 10 times gets cut is the replacement cycle line. So when we need computers and things like that, if you would have taken that into consideration for this year, had we not received some grants from the state, we would have been in big trouble going remote and hybrid. Because we would not have had the materials we needed in order to provide the efficient, effective education for our students. So I feel like that's a great example of, you know, when we keep continually cutting the same lines year after year, it puts us that far behind, that more far behind.
Yeah. And I would piggyback off that. One of the things that kind of got me interested in the budgets and the board to begin with, I think is relevant to this conversation. Um, kicking needed maintenance down the road, in my view, is one of the main reasons that we had to close one of our buildings. Um, we got to a point with Village School where, you know, our insurance company was saying, hey, we can't insure you to be in that building anymore because it's so old and needs so much stuff. And if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, Josh, the, the estimate to get it just to code, not to do everything that should have been done, but just to get it to code was over three, three and a half billion dollars, I think. And that's kind of where my level of concern comes in is can we get by this year without replacing the boiler that Josh wants? I'm sure we can. I think we can. But at some point, the warrant article grows and the cost of stuff keeps going up and I'm just afraid that we're going to get into a situation where we have a building that's so far in disrepair again, that we are forced to ask the taxpayers for way more money than if we just took care of it along the way like, like we should have. But that, that's just my point of view.
Uh, Andy, this is Ian. I just wanted to add that Amber gave a very, um, great example and knowledge is power. So if the residents know this, if we go into the budget committee, you know, saying it out flat, this X equals Y, and this is the reason. I think it'd be easier in discussions on, you know, why these things are needed and why they can't be cut.
But that's, I agree. I can, I'll definitely take that note to them. And, and Patty and Amber, if you have any other good concrete examples like that of, of things that we either haven't replaced and should have, um, that are having a direct impact or things that you're worried about for next year. Um, certainly let me know or just, I'm not sure if you guys are attending this week's NBC meeting or not, but I think Anne's right. Anything that we can lay out like that and really, you know, say, hey, this is, this is the real world impact of, of any cuts, certainly better to know.
So, you know, Patty, uh, gave us this number of $330,000, uh, basically a bulk number. Um, I guess we've got to look at going into the NBC on Thursday, seeing what we're going to do. And, you know, again, with the Warren article for 197,000, where are, where are we comfortable landing on that? Um, I mean, I support the budget where it is right now. Uh, we voted on it, but at some point in time, you know, part of it, you know, like it's, it's a negotiation with the NBC here. So is there something that we can do that we're willing to do moving forward to sort of kind of meet in the middle or move more towards that, their end?
Gene, I like that idea of what can we do to possibly meet in the middle to compromise to show that we are listening and working? I really like that idea.
Yep, I agree. And, and I, I meant to get this out to you guys earlier today. It's just something that I've been working on on my own. Um, but I know the math is good and I'll, I'll try to finish it and send it out so that everybody can see it. Um, and, and I can even put it in the, in the drive if people want to see it publicly. Um, but I put together a little spreadsheet with all the math, basically the same math that the tax impact sheet uses. So that I could just kind of get an idea of, of what we were looking at. Um, basically translating a dollar amount into what the tax rate is. So for starters, it's roughly $130,000, every $130,000, I think it is, um, ends up being a percent on the tax rate. Um, so that's a good thing to know. But I've been punishing numbers in here as we've been talking too. And if I, if I have my numbers right, and I think I do, if we were to take all of the 330,000 that, that Patty just identified. If we were to take that 197.5 warrant article down to 100,000 flat, so minus one, uh, minus 97.5 from that. And if we assume, which I think Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, is fairly safe number of a $700,000 surplus returned for taxes. If you take those three things into consideration, um, then the actual impact on the tax rate would be 4.16%. That's, I, I would say that's a very reasonable number. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable going all the way with all of the things that Patty said. Um, I don't know people's feelings on the size of the warrant article. Um, but I just wanted to give some perspective. I can rattle off a couple of quick numbers here, just again, just for perspective and so we know where we are. The number as proposed right now with the para contract, um, would be projected on the tax fee is a 10.3, 10.13% increase. Assuming the 700, assuming a $700,000 surplus, it would actually be 6.44%. If we were to subtract just a hundred thousand dollars, the tax impact sheet would say 9.6%, which is basically where we were. Um, and if a $700,000 surplus were realized, the actual tax impact would be 5.9%. And then just one more point of reference, if we were to subtract a half a million dollars total from the number with the para contract, the tax impact sheet would show 7.5% or 7.49%. Um, and again, assuming a $700,000 surplus, that would be in actuality more like a, a 3.8% increase. So ju, just I wanted to get that out there as, as some points of reference. So you can see what certain dollar amounts removal actually mean for the tax rate. I don't know if that's helpful without being able to see it, but figured I'd share.
So Andy, this is Amy. Um, I just wanted to share my thoughts that I agree with what April and Jean were saying. Um, I fully support the budget plus the additional 100,000 for the paraprofessional support services association contract. Um, as the board has approved both of those, the budget and the contract. Um, I would be totally on board with sticking with that number and not making any changes. Um, I understand that that might not be our best move forward. And so I think we can find some cuts. I would be comfortable going, you know, meeting them in the middle or, um, meeting them somewhere closer to our side of the number than the middle, you know, going, you know, in the 30 to 40% range instead of meeting them at the 50% range. Um, all of this is because, you know, just to state what I think is obvious. Um, education has a tremendous return on investment. And every dollar that we put in gives us so much more than, uh, on this, on the out, on the return on the investment than what we put in. Um, also, I hear saying that, you know, we are cutting things we need. And I am concerned about the immediate impact of that and the long-term impact of that, which a lot of people have given good examples. I don't need to repeat all of that. Um, so for all of those reasons, I support the budget as passed with the addition of the paraprofessional um, contract, but I would be willing to meet in the middle or a little bit less than that.
Thank you. Others?
Andy, this is Anne. What is the total warrant articles that we're proposing now to the budget committee on Thursday?
Um, I'd have to add them up quick. Let me see if I can find it. So most of them are to be funded from, um, from surplus. So I think Amber helped me out. I think the ones that would actually hit as, as hit the tax rate would be, um, I think the 197.5 and then the 99,000 for next year for the paraprofessionals that we just agreed to. And is that Amber? Is there one of the smaller ones like a 20,000 or something?
We have a van and a truck, right, Josh?
Right. It's in order to establish that vehicle trust. I think it was 20,000.
Yeah, number.
That was also one. They, they total in totality, all warrant articles total, not including the operating budget, 120,500. Granted, with that said, as you just stated, some of those dollars would be offset by revenues coming from the trust. Or, or not, excuse me, not the trust, I mean, from unassigned fund balance.
Uh, Andy, here's a question. So Amber said at the beginning of the discussion, there's about $968,000 um, return of surplus. Why couldn't we take that and purchase some of the items off this budget?
I believe that we can. Um, I, I'm not sure. I, I think there's a couple of ways to do that. Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, we could release, I guess for lack of a better term, some certain dollar amount right now and just give it to Patty's discretion as to where it's needed. Um, we could wait and not include that in the budget paperwork and still make that decision, you know, in a June meeting where we know for sure, you know, or very close to for sure what the surplus actually is. Um, and we can do a, any piece of that. We could do all of it. Um, we could return nothing. Um, which, you know, obviously wouldn't lower the tax rate for next year, but to your point, it would be accomplishing a lot of these things we need to accomplish. Um, so it's kind of, I, I guess when you look at it, it's hitting the tax rate one way or the other. It's just, are we spending it now since we already have it? Or are we giving it back and then kind of asking for it again next year? It's, it's a really, it's a really weird thing.
It won't lower the budget. I mean, it won't lower the tax impact on the residents, but it won't increase it.
Right. Yep. And in theory it would lower, uh, it would lower our effective budget for next year, um, if those were items that we were taking off the list. So.
Josh truly needs some of these items. And if there's a chance that we can't get $420,000 passed on a warrant article, I think, my personal, I think we should take the, the chance of getting the applies to Josh that and lowering the surplus because that's going to lower the budget for next year.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of, of some of that. Um, I think that just because of COVID, I would like to return a whole lot, just, you know, to help bring that number down for next year. But I, if, if, if Patty and Amber thought it was a good idea, you know, taking $100,000 to lower that, that warrant article from 197 down to 97, um, would still leave us with a very healthy surplus and, and, you know, I, I'm not setting that as a hard number, just thinking out loud here, but I, I think there's a, I think there's a line there somewhere between spending it all and returning it all that, that might make some sense.
I think we may want to ask Josh in regards to that particular warrant article because the way our warrant articles are set up are in regards to the CIP planning. And so some of that is kind of building up to purchase what or repair in the time lot that that schedule has been set. So I think we'd want to, should ask Josh if that particular warrant article, there's something we could complete this year or whether it is just putting the money aside so that we have enough to do those items.
That's a good point. Josh, do you want to weigh in on that?
So in, in that particular warrant article, I am looking to fund for years. So in in that particular warrant article, I am looking to fund for years to come. And I use boilers as the biggest example, because I know those are coming down the pipeline sooner rather than later, as well as roofs. We've done some roofs in our honeywell projects throughout the past. But I don't foresee those happening in the future. And we we have one roof in particular, like the time's up. So if you if you look through those warrant articles, that big one is to fund projects. But I think where you guys are getting at is is where we're looking to pull that money out and physically get stuff. There's some real dollars there of whether it's the pickup truck Anne just talked about, the roof I talked about, I would, I would look to get some fire life safety items, some sprinkler heads, etc., which which fit under that category. A mower, we could get into our typical flooring replacement, our typical camera maintenance replacement, like there's a laundry list of items that I could give you that would knock off some of those. But to that one, one specific warrant article, that's looking to fund it for the years to come. Because again, we have one shot at that warrant article. So if I'm not asking to pull out of that trust now, I won't be able to until next year. And that's the the design by that right now is to continue to fund with the expectation that we will be asking sooner rather than later in the years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. But I do understand. And and I think if we approach, or Andy and Jean approached the the Budget Committee saying, we took this into consideration, this is what we're looking to lower our surplus, we're going to be spending this out of surpluses instead of returning, and hence it lowers the budget.
Andy, this is April. We've been, this has been in discussion for some time. I'm a little bit concerned because it's after 10 o'clock. This is an important discussion. But I'm just wondering, what have has the board, has the, just to keep us, get us refocused, particularly me refocused, what has the Budget Committee asked us to do? What kind of action do we need to take tonight? If we can agree on a dollar amount, we've heard before, we have the power to move money around. Are they just looking for a commitment? And then we could go back and tell them at a later date, when we have more time and input, how which line items are going to reduce?
Yeah. And I mean, we don't even really need to tell them which line items. We we, at the meeting, basically, we need to bring forth a dollar amount. And I and I remember last year, kind of at the 11th hour, I don't remember the exact circumstance, but Josh found some money or or there were some grants or something, and we lowered our number by 180,000 or something, very close to the meeting. So right now, to answer your question, I don't think we necessarily need action tonight. They did not offer an actual dollar amount they'd like to see off or a percentage, you know, tax rate increase goal. There was simply a general feeling that it's going to be too high. So please go back and talk to them and and start the conversation of where can we look for some cost savings. I expect that at our meeting this Thursday, there will be a recommendation that's a little bit more firm. So I guess I would just have everybody spend some time between now and our next meeting on what you're comfortable with. You know, take a look at the the things that Patty suggested, see how much of that you're comfortable with. If you want to look at staffing and see if you think you can find efficiencies there, do that, anything that you that you think can help. And I think next time, we'll, we should kind of zero in on, you know, do we want to officially reduce our number? But I don't believe that's, Patty, is that how you're feeling? I don't think we need to nail that.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't think you necessarily have to have a number tonight. But I would encourage you, if you are going to change your number, especially for the warrant and to go forward to the public hearing, it's better to come in, especially if you're closer to the NBC's number, and have that number published on the warrant, rather than get to a meeting or get to the last minute. And, you know, you're at town meeting and you're making an amendment. Okay, the board's changing its number to this. It can get confusing. So if you are going to change the number, and you can do that sooner rather than later, I think that would be beneficial for everybody.
Andy, this is Ann. I I just have a quick question. So there's only two more budget meetings before we have the public budget meeting on the fourth. So the doesn't really give much time if we don't make decisions tonight. It doesn't give much time for the Budget Committee to recommend, because the fourth is is right around the corner, and that's public. So the public's going to weigh and say, hey, what does the Budget Committee recommend? But we're not giving them much chance to recommend something. I think we need the number tonight.
Lana, are you talking about the the overall number, not the line item numbers?
Correct. Because the Budget Committee is going to meet, they've got one more meeting with with the, you know, for this week, and then the next week, they're going to deliberate on what they recommend for the town and for the school. So when they go and residents ask questions and say, well, what does the Budget Committee recommend? And it's, you know, five to zero, or, you know, the Budget Committee doesn't recommend any of it. I'm I'm concerned that we don't, we don't have time.
This is April. If someone would motion, I'd be interested in voting on a motion regarding our overall budget.
I think we can, we can go into public hearing with the number we have right now, and change that number at public hearing on February 4. And I mean, we could, I mean, yes, Anne, to your point, it looks a lot better going into to the meeting, the town meeting, to a school district meeting, with a number that's more agreeable to the NBC. But at that point, too, we can also change that number. We can amend that that warrant at that point, too. So it's not, it's not, it's pressing, but it's not, you know, ending, it's not an end all.
I mean, hearing what our, the advice that our superintendent also gave us, she said that it's better to do so later than kind of at the 11th hour, that wasn't her exact words. So, you know, our superintendent has had a lot more experience working in this district than we have on as board members. So I would encourage us all to take to heart what she has advised us regarding the budget.
Can, in that vein, can I ask for a little bit more specificity? Patty, are you saying that tonight is the best time for us to make a decision? Or are you saying?
So I don't, I'm not trying to force you into making a decision. But, you know, if if April's asking the question, I would say that over the years of experience, the closer your number is to the Budget Committee, when you publish that number, the better. If the NBC saw you come forward, if you, you know, if you're thinking about a large number, because you actually maybe want to try to get in on the same number, you know, in recent years, we've been able to have the same number, and then the budget is voted, and you know that you're likely going to get your budget, because you've worked together to come up with a number. And I don't know, I think we're probably too far apart for that to happen. But I think that the reception from the NBC is much better when you do go in and give them a number and say, hey, the board is agreeing with you that we need to come closer. And, you know, we've decided to make $300,000 in cuts. If you can get to that number tonight, and you're all relatively close, that's great. If you're too far apart, and you don't feel like you're ready to do that, then then it can wait.
And Patty, what was the total of the number that you mentioned earlier?
334,000.
I'll throw out a number, this is not a motion, just for information's sake, because I've been playing with my spreadsheet some more. So going on, I I figured in cutting $275,000 from the budget, and that's based on, you know, specifically, the items that Patty identified. I had, I had figured to cut the Warren Article 2, but after hearing from Mr. Coughlin, I'm not thinking that's wise, if it's specifically for future planning. I, it'd be my preference to keep that there. I know it's a large number. I know it's a risk that it won't pass. But I I think that being short sighted and worrying only about today is going to bite us in the long run. So anyway, if I plug in the budget number, or the appropriations number that we have right now, including the para contract, I remove $275,000 from that, which is most of, but not all of the items that Patty mentioned. And again, I'm assuming a $700,000 surplus. And and I think that's fair. And if anybody wants to ask me why, I'm happy to try to explain. But I I'm trying to keep these numbers as realistic as possible. So if we minus $275,000, and we assume a $700,000 surplus, that comes out to 4.99% edge to the tax rate. That's a number I'm fairly comfortable with. Obviously, I'd love it to be a 0% increase. That's not reasonable.
Andy, would you mind, besides just the rate they're giving us a number, that the number you're working with to get the 4.99% increase?
Yep. So that would make our appropriations number 28,054,554. So then when you subtract out the 15 million and change revenue, minus $700,000 surplus, and divide by the valuation of the town, it comes out to a dollar amount tax rate of $25.83.
Andy and Jean, can you please speculate as to when the NBC says, you know, we would love it if you would shave off a significant amount, what that means? Is that 100,000? Is it half a million? Is it a million?
It's, it's hard to say. I I think that on the Budget Committee, there are a fairly wide array of opinions. And I think, you know, that there's two former school board members on on the Budget Committee right now. And I think even they were in agreement that it needs to come down some. And then there's the other other end of the spectrum where there are, I think there are folks that if we said, yep, well, you know, we'll cut $3 million out of this, even though it's going to hurt things, I think there might be people okay with that. So that's kind of where, you know, there's nobody on the far side of, no, let's just give them all the money that they want, which is understandable. So that's kind of the range that you're looking at. As far as actual dollar amounts, again, I I think we'll hear something next time around. Mr. Connors does budgets for the state, and he's always talking about, you know, setting up budgets for a 1.5 and a 3% lapse. I'm not always clear if, when he's saying that, if he means 3% on the tax rate, or 3% on our budget overall, after including revenues, or just on our appropriations, on what we think we need to run it. So it's kind of hard. And and I think part of it is just, again, the complexity of this whole thing, the complexity of the tax rate sheet. I think a lot of people just think about it in very different ways. I think a lot of people come at it as, hey, what's the tax rate going to be? That's all I care about. And other people look at it differently. So sorry, that was a long answer to say, I really don't know. I wouldn't be surprised if they came back next week, or next week, later this week, and said, you know, we don't want the tax rate to go up any more than 3%. I also, I guess I wouldn't be surprised if they said that 5% was okay. I just, I can't really narrow it down any further than that. I don't know if Jean has a better feeling.
Andy, can I just give input from history of sitting?
Actually, I'm sorry, Anne. I had asked Jean for comment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, that number that I said earlier, about 600,000 sticking in my head from Mike, and I think the 3% lapse is like, you know, assuming a 3% up or down on the budget that he's writing. So it's not, he's not looking for 3% off of our budget, because that would run out about $850,000. But yeah, I I feel the same way Andy does, as far as the makeup of the NBC. And I think, you know, I had, I'd sent Andy, Andy some numbers during this for him to plug into his spreadsheet, you know, going on Patty's 334, I said, what if we pared that down to 220, and knocked the warrant article down to 120, basically taking a third off of each. And that came out to a 4.8% increase. Is that correct, Andy? So I I mean, I I'm pretty, well, Mike specifically, was at the 600,000. I think everybody else, you know, there were, there are opinions both ways. But I think, you know, if we can be reasonable, pair a little bit off of ours, you know, coming, you know, we're going to come back towards what they might be thinking, which we probably really don't actually know. It would be helpful anyway. But again, I don't know if we actually have to do it at the next meeting, or, you know, if we can put it off a little bit longer, because that that number, that when, you know, that number gets when the warrants get published, and, you know, it says, Denver School Board was, you know, whatever, four to one, and NBC was like, eight to three, or whatever the makeup is, you know, I, that doesn't come out till town, till town meeting. So I mean, we really do have up until the budget hearing on February 4 to do this. But if people feel comfortable making a decision now on this, I'm fine with that, too.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April. I would like to make a motion. We've been talking about this for a while. I'm not really sure where we are. We've got a lot more to go on the agenda. So I would like to throw out an agenda, a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 11 o'clock, and hoping that it will help us move past some of the things we need to do tonight. Thank you.
Is there a second? All right, discussion around that quickly? All right, motion to, go ahead, Patty.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to point out one thing that this, when this happened last time, we didn't get to a non-public item. We have one non-public. I don't think it's going to take long, but it's a personnel matter that really needs to happen tonight. So I would just encourage the board, if you're going to make this motion, that maybe we skip a good portion of the rest of the agenda and get to that non-public session, if you would, please. And thank you.
This is April. I would support that we use our time management to respect the superintendent's request, should this motion pass.
Okay, as far as discussion goes, I'm okay with that. I'm not seeing anything crazy pressing on policy review, because I think the two things that say, the one thing that says action at this meeting is an optional policy anyway. And the other big agenda item that we have is board reports, which is not mission critical. So I'm okay with all this, if you guys are. So I guess I'll call the question.
I just want to make one statement. I mean, the principals have been hanging around the whole time, and, you know, to give their reports. So I don't want to forego that.
Okay. Right. Yep. So motion to adjourn at 11:00. I guess that's it. On a roll call vote, April. Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay. So I think with that, if everybody's okay, moving on from budget, please analyze as much as you can before our next meeting. I will take our general consensus and and our discussions to the NBC, let them know that we are at least initially willing to look at lowering that number some, and that we will try to firm up a number for them next time. And I think I would like to go to.
Before we move on from budget, I just have a question. Can you give me the number of before any changes are to be requested to a number that we might bring to NBC is would be the current number that they have?
So this won't be the current number. Well, the current number that they have is 28,229,879. But with the para contract that we just passed.
Yes.
I believe that the number is 28,329,554. Okay.
Okay. So this is April. I'd like to make another motion. I would like to make the motion that we amend our budget to be the number that Andy kind of threw out there for us earlier. Andy, let's see if I got this right. 28,054,544?
Uh, $554.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. $554.
All right. Is there a second? All right, hearing none. I guess we will come back to this next time around.
Thank you.
Yep, so.
Can you just throw that number one more time?
Sure. 28,054,554. And as Amy said before, I'm sure there's change involved in all of those numbers. I typed in whole numbers. Okay, so let's try to do, let's, if Ryan, Ryan, are you with us? Ryan Casey, if you're here, let's, let's. Um, okay. So, um, let's try to do, uh, let's, if Ryan, Ryan, are you with us? Ryan Casey, if you're here, let's, let's go to you and. I apologize for keeping you on here this long. Maybe we don't. So, uh, let's try to hear from the principals quickly. And then I'll just open it up for the rest of the board reports. If ever, if anybody has anything from one of their committees they want to share, we'll do that. And then we'll hit non-public. So, um, let's start with Dr. Morris.
Uh, I'll be brief. Um, we welcome students back, uh, today, like, like every other Pembroke School, um, in our hybrid model. Uh, and that went very well. Um, our co-curriculars, uh, started actually last week, uh, with some, um, games. Uh, and that has gone very well. Uh, live streaming is available right off of our website. It's. Through YouTube. It doesn't cost anything and anyone can click on that and enjoy a good game. Um, and let's see here. Um, I talked a little bit about the, uh, remote students and the progress reports that they received. We are going to begin information nights for sending schools and eighth grade parents on Thursday of this night of this week. Uh, it'll be TRS in Chichester, and then we will do Allenstown and Epsom next week. And I just, if I can for a moment, just acknowledge. Uh, the retirement of Chief Paulson, uh, after I believe 58 years and, um. You know, everything that he's done for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll go to Mr. Marston.
Now we'll keep it brief also. Um, I'll try to, I'll agree with Dan. It was great having, uh, students back. Uh, our bus run, uh, actually this was the first time we tried the. Second or third, uh, bus route. I can't remember how many times we've done this. Um, and we've had one route and all kids were on time and all kids left at the same time. So that was, uh, that was actually a bonus. I can't believe I'm saying that, that that was a highlight of the day that the buses worked well. Our basketball teams are starting, uh, I should say team. Girls team is able to start, uh, tomorrow, uh, with a home game. We're going to make our first attempt at live streaming. Uh. It'll be a stationary camera. So it's not like the NBA, but, uh, hopefully folks will be able to see that live on our, uh. The link will be on our webpage. Also, our boys are not able to start yet due to COVID. And I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you. And Ms. Gary.
Um, same here. It was very exciting to see the kiddos back in the building today. Um, they were, I, I asked many of them if they were excited and they were very chipper and they were, they loved, um, being back in. So that was great. Um, we kicked off using our silent dismissal program this morning or this afternoon. And I know everyone doesn't see it on the outside, but on the inside. It's a very different, um, feel. The kids trickle out. Um, it was a great peace of mind. That I was not putting 60 students in a gym waiting to be, um. Let out into it. We had 16 at most and they just kind of trickled in. It's very safe too. I love the accountability. We literally clicked depart. When a child leaves the classroom, we click load when they get on the bus and then we click depart when the bus leaves. So we have 100% accountability. In a way we've never had before, as well as social distancing. So that went great. The other thing I can't believe we're talking about is kindergarten registration, um, is getting ready to come up. So we're finishing getting all of that set and then we'll have all of those, um. That process ready to go. Um, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. I know some other districts have started it. We're going to wait just a couple more weeks to get that, uh, going. Um, but other than that, that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have quick questions for our principals? Okay. Thank you all. Um, and with that, I think we'll jump over top of policy and, um. We will do our non-public session if there, well, we have, need to go into non-public session under Hampshire RSA 91. Dash A colon three, small letter two. Help me out with the letter Patty.
C.
Letter C, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a board member. Um, on a roll call vote to enter non-public at 10:36. Jean?
Andy is trying to jump in. Uh, you did skip over public comments.
Yeah, I was going to come back to those afterwards.
All right, then yes.
Ann. Ann, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Oh, we may have lost Dan. April?
Yes.
Amy? We may have lost Amy.
I see Amy in the list.
Amy. That, that might be another Amy. Ann said she lost internet. Okay. Um, well, we're going to, we're going to move on. It looks like those two are both working on connecting. Um, but we still have a quorum, so we're going to try to move forward and hopefully they can get us. So we have two yeses, I'm a yes. Um, if you're new to this, you're going to get moved to a virtual waiting room right now and we will return you to the call when we come on and on public.
This is Amy. Hopefully you can hear me. I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, leave request.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is April. That's why it's unpaid leave.
All right. Um, so we have motion and second, uh, on a roll call vote, I will go April.
Yes.
Um, Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
I'm unfortunately still not seeing Ann. Um, and I'm a yes. Uh, so motion carries. And we've got just enough time, I think, to squeeze in. A public comment section. Um, so we will definitely cut this off. Um, a couple of minutes before 11, since we've agreed to adjourn then, but if you're. And you've got something to contribute to a public, public comment, you can go ahead and use the raise hand button. If there are more phone calls, we can check those at the end, but right now it's just Amy. Participant number has dropped significantly, so we may not have any. All right. Um, yep, not seeing any hands, not seeing any new phone numbers. So we will move on. We, we only have one policy on here. It's my opinion that if we try to do anything with it now, we're going to be rushed. Um, if it's okay with you guys, I would be, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
This is April. Make a motion. We adjourn.
Amy, second.
Great. On a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thanks everybody for hanging in there and, uh, we'll talk to you in a couple of weeks. No, I should say, next scheduled meeting, February 2nd. Thanks, everybody.